October fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, it's six P M. Roll call, please.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Riley Hoagland.
Here.
Diane Kooz is excused. Rick Mark.
Here.
And Mitch Parsons.
Here.
Please join me in pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all for joining us this evening on this nice sunny day before the rains commence, anyway. Our first order of business is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of extension of license agreement for Nell Scott Deck, number two, for minutes of a regular meeting, a special meeting of August fifth, two thousand nineteen, at six P M., and the minutes of a regular meeting, August twelfth, two thousand nineteen, six P M.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We were asked to remove the August twelfth minutes.
August twelfth minutes?
For revision.
For review at a future date, okay? So the consent agenda would be number one and number two.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda consisting of items one and two. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay. Hearing none. We then have comments, comments from citizens present on agenda and non-agenda items. And before I call those who have signed up, a comment here. Article one, section eight of the Oregon Constitution provides, "No law shall be passed restraining the free expression of opinion or restricting the right to speak, write, or print freely on any subject whatever, but every person shall be responsible for the abuse of this right. Be advised, statements and comments by citizens under comments from citizens present or on public hearing or public comment items are solely the opinions and statements of the speakers and are not statements by the city of Lincoln City and do not represent the opinions of the city, its officers, and employees." With that, let me call Bill Lackner. Bill, if you'd pull right up and just state your name and talk right into the mic, it'd be great.
Hi, my name's Bill Lackner. I want to thank the council for giving me the opportunity to address you on some issues that I've given a lot of thought to over a period of time. And I used to teach the classes here for clam digging and crabbing and very much enjoyed the experience. Lincoln City's a very proactive community when it comes to natural resource issues and the environment, and that's much appreciated by me and my friends and the people that I have known to met through my efforts here. Anyway, I've got five items on recommendations that we'd like to make. And the first one would be the consideration of annexing all of the land around the bay to become part of the city. So you have a single functioning unit of government entity responsible for the bay and what goes on in the bay. And I'm getting tongue-tied. I'm glad I don't get stage fright.
You're okay.
Anyway, on number two, we've advocated for, we'd like to see the city advocate for solar-powered public information signs posted at the D River wayside and other coastal locations to advise visitors to the area of dangerous local conditions or imminent danger of tsunamis would be a good example, amber alerts, that type of thing, dangerous tidal conditions. You know, in the winter, we do get some awfully high tides with big waves, and you don't want to be up against that seawall when a wave comes over the top of it. And then we would, item number three is the management, formulate a management objectives to deal with saltwater intrusion into Devil's Lake because of rising sea levels. That's another consideration. Again, you have some homes that could be inundated and roadways. Much of this is going to occur throughout western Oregon, and I don't know what the state of Oregon's outlook or how they're going to prioritize, how they react to that type of situation. But it's something that you should give thought to if you want to do a seawall or tide gates or not, or let nature take its course and let occur what would occur there. It'd become a saltwater tidal basin, and it would change the character and nature of the lake considerably. Number four, upgrade classification of the city sewer treatment plant to a Class A facility. There are endemic problems to Class B facilities, bio sludge being the biggest one. The state of Oregon does not acknowledge that there is a problem with bio sludge and the contamination from bio sludge, but other states have found that not to be the case and now prohibit the disposition of bio sludge, bio solids onto farmland and cropland. And we don't think that's a good idea. We've seen enough. Well, I don't know if any of you were here when they had the meetings on the bio sludge up in the city of Sletz, but I've been out there. I didn't go out there to look for that. I went to bird hunting, took my dog coming back, and the odor was extremely noticeable from the material that they placed on some of those fields and not pleasant, and it does cause environmental problems. Number five, present, Sletz Morridge used to serve as a boat launch. They used to have a boat launch, and now their launch is full of sediment and they don't operate it. So Sletz is without a public boat launch, and we would love to see a boat launch. And where you would put a boat launch, I don't know, but we have some pretty innovative folks here, and I'm sure that through the course of time, especially when you consider if you expanded the area of the city limits to include all of the territory around the bay that you would offer you additional opportunities to build a launch. These are just some of the things that I've noticed, and when I'm sitting there at Kylo's with my wife eating and I look out the tidal lagoon and I see young women washing their babies and the slurry of highly contaminated water that the seagulls have all crapped in, you know, it gives me the willies, you know. I want to rush down and say, stop what you're doing, you know, but you can't. So lighted signs, I think, would go a long way towards relieving that. If you go down there and look at the signs, nobody ever reads them. They walk right by them, tunnel vision. Mommy, this is a true story. Two kids got out of the car, they're running down, across the parking lot. Mommy, mommy, look at all the seagull poop, right? And then they run down and jump in the water of the tidal lagoon. So, you know, it sort of makes you wonder. But anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you for putting this together. I'm assuming you gave the clerk a copy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Riley did.
Thank you very much. You've been busy. Is, my question, is there a group behind you?
Oh, just my clam diggers association. We've been a nonprofit entity, now we're a profit entity without any profit.
So I guess the reason I ask is, as soon as people hear that you want to annex, want us to annex.
Oh, yeah.
So I can send all those letters and emails I get.
To me.
To you.
I've already gotten the hate mail. You know, it's just for a purpose of discussion.
I hear you. I appreciate it.
You know.
If I could, the only correction I want to make you before you leave, if you don't mind, is your number four on the sewage stuff, city of Lincoln City for the last three to four years has not, we stopped doing sludge on pasture land. It goes now, it's dried and goes to the landfill. So we've changed.
Oh, you've changed your.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
So you could take that one and count it as a win already. We're way ahead of you.
Well, that's fine.
All right.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks for coming forward.
Thank you very much.
Scott Torrance.
I'd like to have an extra forty seconds like that. Gentlemen, please. My name is Scott. I own Bear Valley Nursery. Just for your information, I own the property that's right adjacent to Sletz Morridge. About two years ago, I approached the Lincoln County Planning Department, and I told them that that was going up for foreclosure for five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. I offered my property to them at a steal with a good tax credit, fell on deaf ears. That property, Sletz Morridge, do not reside in the bay. They're above the bridge, so that's in the river. So just for your information. So back to the city sidewalks and going to be happening where I'm located at. I called Lila today to ask her about the report that was going to be given to you folks. I was told I'd be presented that. And anyways, she said she could send it to me about two thirty or something. So I just asked her a few questions, like what her recommendations were on it. She says she has no recommendations. She gives that to you folks, and you folks base your recommendations off the report. She did tell me some facts, though, about the project. They felt that it would be safer to usher pedestrians through the project during daylight hours instead of nighttime. I feel that that is inaccurate and untrue. I got a feeling that with the Hilltop Restaurant, my business, the Restor next to me, an intersection down below, that they're going to have a hard enough time getting people in and out of these properties, let alone to take their attention off of pedestrians. I did walk on the west side of the highway up to Gerber Tire about two weeks ago to get a pickup that was there that they were doing some work on. That was about the scariest thing I ever did because I was trying to figure out what they were going to do with the pedestrians, and that prompted me to go talk to Lila and see if they had a contingent plan about pedestrians through there. People are focusing so much on the merges when they're going down through there and what's going on that people didn't really even see me walking, and the ones that did were startled because I was over there walking or watching the car next to them. It was very scary. So I just, I'm having a hard time fadning them, getting the people through there. So that was one thing that I was told from Lila. The other thing was like, oh, Scott, you know, they're going to have to rip concrete panels out because they won't get good compaction at night, and they can't do a good job and this and that. That's not true. The companies work, do night jobs all the time, all across the United States, everywhere. I started with J W Fowler about twenty-five years ago. They're a big company. They're out of Dallas. And a lot of the work that I did with them, I was a great checker, and a lot of work that I did with them was at night on underground projects. I also had an excavation business here in town until I got tired of killing things. I didn't quit my excavation because I wasn't good at it. I quit because I got tired of killing things, trees, frogs, mice, rats, whatever it may be. So I have a little knowledge. I built the subdivision behind DMV there. It was close to half mile road, put all the infrastructure in and stuff. This is going to be a nightmare. It started out as a simple project. This was about a year ago, and here we are finally now, just getting ready to put the projects through. It's just over five hundred thousand was the low bid on it. K and E, which is a familiar contractor to this town, came in a little bit higher than the other contractor did. But what was funny to me is Lila said it costs so much to work at night. When you look at K and E, their bid was only ten thousand dollars more to work at night versus the numbers that you folks are going to see that are thirty-five thousand. K and E is a smart outfit. They've done probably the majority of the work at night and the big contracts in this town for quite a while, and they know a little bit more than this other outfit, I'm sure. That's why they're a little bit higher on their price during the daytime hours because they know what happens during the daytime. It doesn't matter what month it is, there's always a bottleneck. So anyways, I wanted to just talk about that, and I'm wondering if there had been any mitigation done for impacts to property owners. And the reason I ask this is there was no pre-bid meeting that was even done on this project. Usually, you know, all the projects that I did with the city years ago, they always, they were small projects, there was a pre-bid meeting that was done to let people know, you know, this is an affected business, pedestrians need to go here, this is going to happen here, we don't know what this. That wasn't done, so I already know there's going to be some unforeseen on this project. The contractor's going to say, I wasn't aware. I seen a contractor at about one-thirty in the afternoon scrambling from Drayton's to the Restor and back up here to get his bid in on the bid day. And I'm like, oh, my gosh, I just couldn't believe that. This is what happens sometimes. People are so busy and they miss things. And I'm just, you know, I'm concerned, the Hilltop went in about a year ago. I'm not just speaking for Bear Valley. They're a small business, you know. They paid almost three-quarters of a million for that property, and they're trying to make it work. It's going to affect, that project's going to affect everybody, all the way up to the mall, probably. We know how the bottlenecking is. So do I get an extra forty seconds?
Can you finish up?
I can. So I just, I tried to build a dedicated reserve for this, but you know, we had an unseasonably wet year this year, fire season's been shut down early. We're not prepared. And the saddest thing is, is I shouldn't have to feel selfish and embarrassed right now to be up here, but I do. You know, there's people in the world that are really suffering, and I think the city should always take care of the people that reside in the city, and I shouldn't have to be up here asking and pleading with you guys to do this. So I just hope that you make the right decision and you watch out for all the businesses that are impacted.
Scott, you want to give us what the right decision is?
To me, the right decision would have been to restructure the contract.
Would have been, because the point being is, we haven't made it yet, so.
I understand.
So what, you know, we hear often, just do the right thing. And so I'm asking you, what is the right thing?
The right thing for any major project on Highway one-on-one is nighttime work. That's the right thing.
That's what I wanted to hear you say.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And the agenda looked really boring, so I'm going home.
All right. John Forrest.
I just wanted, if you guys want to back check.
Kathy, what? Okay.
Well, it's that season again. Nell Scott Reef's starting to go off, starting this week. I'm John Forrest, a thirty-year resident of Lincoln City. I'm the founder-director of the Nell Scott Reef Big Wave Classic, currently in its fifteenth year. Over that time and especially the last four years, the Lincoln City's administration, headed by Ron the Don Chandler, Ed Kickback Drystat, and the shoe-sniffing, gun-tooting city attorney, Richard Appicello, whose previous nickname from his last place of employment in the city of Ashland was Sneezeball.
John, John, John.
Have discredited my event.
John, can you keep the personalities out of it and just stick to whatever it is? Otherwise.
I didn't name him. This is the city of Ashland.
Thank you. Just keep to your subject.
What city gives refuge to a Cedar City, Utah manager who, I quote from the Salt Lake Tribune, resigned his post abruptly, and the mayor and city council are pretty quiet about the reasons why. But the city is very interested in being thorough when it hires a new manager. And here's another quote, "I really think we need to check with employees they worked with before," said Councilwoman Cheryl Stoker. This Ashland city attorney resigned abruptly after three years for health reasons, and when reached by cell phone, declined to comment. I would assume mental health reasons or just incompetence or maybe just jumping the gun before he got fired. I haven't been able to find any background in Ed Drystat, but based on his incompetent performance with my event, I would expect the same. The Lincoln City Council has hired and allows, allowed these incompetents to thrive in Lincoln City. I realize that some of you weren't a party to those hires, but you can certainly be a part of their release. Ed, Ron, and Richard are directly responsible for the removal of safeguards designed to protect the spectators from the rolling logs that almost killed spectators at Canyon Park during Gabe Smith's event, and was well documented. This ego trio are also responsible for a homeowner's property being trespassed upon by a rogue event along with the underage drinking. Chandler has continued to allow that absentee owner's property address to be used as Smith's headquarters, even after being advised of it several times by the owners. Last year, after this power trio brainstormed, they decided a permit was indeed needed to regulate Canyon Park, and Smith was convicted and fined of using the park without a permit. Earlier this year, I was given my usual permit for the park, and after Gabe Smith threatened to go to the Oregonian with the story of their incompetence, Ron awarded Smith a secondary right of first refusal permit. I won't bore you with the details of that secondary permit, but in essence, it gives Gabe the right to call an event, and then I have twenty-four hours, depending on the forecast, to either call my event or pass to Gabe's event. Within twenty-four hours, I called my event based on the forecast, five days before the contest. The city and Gabe were informed that it was my park for the day, and he couldn't call his event. Liz Francis sent an email to Gabe Smith and all involved. Mr. Forrest has officially called the event according to the terms and conditions of your permit in section two C. If Mr. Forrest does exercise his right, applicant may not call the event, and Mr. Forrest has exclusive right to hold the contest during the seven-day period. In response to the city voiding his permit for that day and activating mine, Gabe responded, "I would rather pay a fine than return forty thousand dollars." Just a heads up, John Forrest will not ruin this for us. It's already in the works and happening, no matter what he does. The city, Ron Chandler, Ed Drystat, Richard Appicello, and Liz Francis never informed Gabe that he was non-compliant, and were perfectly happy to have two events battle it out at Canyon Park, putting both spectators and competitors once again in jeopardy. Seriously, why did nobody say anything? I advised Richard Appicello of the clash and that I would bring this before the city council if he didn't fix it, and he responded, "As your email threatens litigation staff as requested, that all future communications be through legal counsel. You can have your legal counsel contact me at this email address." Well, thirty minutes later, he got an email, he sent me an email saying, "Mr. Forrest, my number is five-four-one-nine-nine-six-one-two-oh-nine if you need to talk." I guess he wanted to talk off-record and advised me verbally to go ahead and run my event, even though Gabe is violating the permit and putting my athletes, staff, and the public in danger. This is not something I would ever do. I don't value my contest over the danger to spectators and athletes and never will. As previously displayed by Ron, Ed, and Richard's decisions and Gabe's actions, safety is not their concern. I have more, but I'm running out of time, and this has spilled out over the way more than my event. My event is a big deal, and its handling is symptomatic of a much bigger problem created by this power trio and other areas of the city administration, which I will address in the future. Please believe me when I tell you the people of Lincoln City and beyond will be watching. Like Arnold Schwarzenegger said, "I'll be back." Thanks so much.
Our pleasure. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who didn't have the opportunity to sign up, would like to come before the council with a comment? Seeing and hearing none. We'll move on. Now's the time for public hearings. The owners of the co-surf sides here? Okay, good. You want to go? No need to move it? Move the hearing? Okay. So at the crest, if we could, move item number five, G five, behind G seven, if that's right. We'll just move to listed number six, public hearing. This is on the feather banners. So it is now six-twenty-six P M. The hearing is now open to accept public comment on file Z O A two thousand nineteen dash oh-nine, extension of the sunset clause for feather banners. This public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title seventeen, which is zoning of the Lincoln City Municipal Code. The proposal amends section seventeen point seven-two point oh-six-oh, special conditions, standards, and limitations by zoning district. Paragraph C two, to affirm, extend, and reinstate the allowance for feather banners for an additional six months. The planning commission held a public hearing on this matter on September third. Planning commission's recommendation is included in the council packet, communication in the meeting packet. Counselors, are there any abstentions or disqualifications based on conflict of interest or personal bias? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you. After the staff presentation, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If we have questions, your time responding will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will staff please present a report?
Your Honor, counsel, I'll handle the report. This ordinance, public hearing on this ordinance is simply the Title seventeen version of what you've already done in chapter nine-three-four, I believe, for signage. This, again, is temporary signage. This allowance that's in the existing ordinance for feather banners to be replaced, or rather to replace up to two flags, expired on October eighth. What this does, what the ordinance, the prior ordinance did, was essentially reinstate that allowance for another six months. This had to be reviewed by the planning commission because it's Title seventeen, and they recommended approval, and we asked that you take public comment and then move forward with the ordinance, which is on this agenda.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Hearing none. Does any member of the audience wish to provide comment? Seeing and hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record? We have a motion to close the public hearing and the record. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Counselor Casper. Any discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing and record, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay. Hearing none. And so deliberation-wise, we've got the actual ordinance coming up a bit later, and we can discuss at that point, if that's all right. Okay? We have then, public hearing. This public hearing on CP, it is now six-thirty P M. The hearing is now open to accept public comment on file CPA two thousand nineteen dash oh-two, Future Land Use Map and Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment. This concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend the comprehensive plan, land use goals, policies, and map to create two new future land use map plumes, plums, flums, designation of recreation, resort, mixed use, R R M U, and resort residential mixed structure, R R M S, specifying zoning districts as open space, O S, and residential, R one dash seven point five, and R one dash ten, including limited planned development. limited planned development, commercial, and optional zoning districts through the use of a negotiated development agreement. Resort community commercial, RCC, and resort neighborhood commercial. The proposal amends the comprehensive plan, land use goals, and policies to authorize statutory development agreements to modify or exempt developments from otherwise applicable provisions of the zoning and land development code. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on September 3. The Planning Commission's recommendation is included in the council's communication in the meeting packet. Counselors, are there any suspensions or disqualifications based on conflict of interest or personal bias? Seeing and hearing none. After the staff presentation, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If you have questions, your three, your time responding will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name, mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will the staff please present its report?
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Lindsay Zaimo, Planning Director here for Lincoln City. Tonight, we have a public hearing on CPA 2019-02. As Mayor Anderson explained, this is a map and text amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, and I will move forward with my staff presentation. An overview of the comprehensive plan amendment tonight for public hearing. It does a multitude of things. It amends the Lincoln City comprehensive plan by establishing two new land use designations. This includes a text amendment as well as a map amendment. It also adds authorizing language to allow the use of statutory development agreements to implement the land use designations specified in the comprehensive plan as authorized by city council via ordinance. The Planning Commission heard the public hearing and reviewed the materials. They did make recommendations, and their changes have been included in your packet tonight. The overview of their changes in the concept map found as, I'm trying to remember how we referenced it, as an exhibit. They added the white overlay to a large area of green that was shown to identify that this would be future residential use in different phase of development. They also made some amendments to the dedication of affordable housing. The original draft language had a minimum of 30%. The Planning Commission discussed the funding and how the city acquired the real property that is looking at being, the map amendment would apply these designations to, and based upon public testimony, recommended reducing that to 20%. And then, in addition, they recommended utilizing the 80 to 125% of the area median income instead of staff's draft of 80 to 120%. In the written recommendations provided to you in your packet, the Planning Commission was provided historical minutes from the last time that the city made a land use designation change-up in the area was when they designated the Knoll as open space. The Planning Commission as a whole requests that the city reconsider, city council reconsider designating the 7.8 acres immediately west of the Knoll to designate that as open space and request council to direct staff to bring that forward at a later date. In the residential designation, the Planning Commission made changes to increase the allowed gross floor area of residential structures to allow live-work units, also known as home occupations, and that would be 25% of the residential structure is proposed. There are also minor grammatical text and language changes to the proposal as it's presented to you today. Staff has provided, and I apologize, this map isn't very readable, however, it shows a big distinction between colors, and that's what I was going for. The gray area in the center of this map is the proposed 22.3 or so acres of recreation-resort mixed use that is in the consideration for the land use designation this evening. The remaining, remainder acreage of approximately 351 is being considered for the resort residential mixed structure proposal. We'll overview the recreation-resort mixed use first. It does include, as I stated, approximately 22.3 acres. It is central to the surrounding residential use designations. The draft language allows for the following uses, including commercial, retail, as well as professional office space. This does include the specific uses of lodging, hotels, motels. The proposed language also requires a dedication of 1.5 acres of open space to one acre of this recreation-resort mixed use if expansion is to be used in other areas of town and or requested by property owners or residents in the future.
Yes.
Lindsay, can you give an example, just a real-life example of that? Last one?
Um...
A business, like a tire center opens there, and they want to open up. Can you give me a, for instance, instead of that?
Like a specific uses?
Specific case, like a specific, this would be this. Because that is, it's kind of like, there's a motel there, and they want to open up another motel in town. Can, and I'm just trying to piece that together.
Yeah, so I think, Councilor Hoagland, what you might be thinking of is the specific zoning codes where there would be those specific detailed uses outlined. What we're looking at here is really a mixed use designation for commercial area. Those specificities haven't been drafted yet in the implementation of this land use designation. However, we are looking at mixed use structures, so, or not structures, mixed, wide variety of mixed uses.
If I could add to that. The example is, if, wherever this zone is applied, if someone has an acre to develop for whatever use is permitted within that zone, so let's say it's a hotel, they are going to develop it on one acre of property, they would have to give to the city one and a half acres in order to be able to develop it.
And the proposed language specifically reads, let's see here, "To obtain the flume designation of the recreation-resort mixed use, a property owner must have made an associated dedication of undisturbed pristine open space or critical natural areas, deeded to Lincoln City for the benefit of all residents at a ratio of one and a half acres of open space per one acre of this future designation."
The specific example of this that we actually have in place is really the application of it to this area that she had showed on the map. That's 22, a little more than 22 acres of property. The city had already essentially preserved 35 acres, which is the Knoll area, and so that's where that formula came from. It's already been applied once.
But we don't, under the future designation of the RR, whatever it is. We're doing it, but not under a zoning.
Zone, yeah, this is a comprehensive plan amendment, so a zoning ordinance would have to be created. So this looks both back to what we have done, but it also applies, anytime you create a zone, it can be applied anywhere within the city.
Right, I understand that this isn't specific to that. So once, if we create this designation, we would then be able to apply for that designation to that area, right? As the city?
Correct.
Right. Also, why is it acres and not one and a half times the property? Are you anticipating nobody to develop less than one acre?
If I may, I have a slide that does talk about some of these things that I'd like to, council to consider as you go through. There are some language, there is some strength in the language of the proposal that is not generally, well, maybe, maybe not generally. In my professional experience, I haven't seen such strict standards within a comprehensive plan goal and policy.
Interesting. If somebody around town has less than an acre...
Correct.
...but also has other land, but they want that designation, but they're limited by not owning an acre that they want changed.
Right, and so the draft language does speak to the ratio, so if there was less than an acre and a half and one acre, we would utilize that ratio, one and a half to one.
Okay. All right, I think I follow. Thanks. Thank you.
So again, the residential area is what is kind of this pea-green hatched color that is the significance of the region and the area being shown. The, it is approximately 351 acres being established. It was expanded to include tracks A, A'., B, C, and D of the village's master plan, which was requested by the Planning Commission to include those. Under the draft language for the comprehensive plan amendment, it would be implemented by our existing zoning districts of R175, R110, and open space, as well as the statutory development agreement option until council directs staff to develop the new zoning districts for this area. It allows implementation via the negotiated development agreement, which does comply with the intent, that development agreement must comply with the intent of the designation. And uses would be limited to residential, with the allowance of 25% of the structure be a live-work function. That would be, maybe, you wanted to have an accounting business in your office, and you might have one or two people coming every now and then, or maybe you have a one-seat salon where you do nails or hair, something of another service. In addition to the map that I showed that shows the two land use designations, we also have our future concept zoning district map, which shows where the middle lower rural density residential should be focused within the area, as well as the ideal placement of roadways to retain the natural views from the hillside with the topography of this area. There would be one distinct area known as the recreation-resort designation for all commercial uses, and then four distinct areas of the implementation of the resort residential mixed structure. That would include open space, rural, lower, and middle density housing. The roadways can take advantage of the elevation and the views towards the Pacific, and the concept plan establishes small walkable blocks for easy maneuverability and pedestrian activity throughout the neighborhood. The criteria for approval for the city council to consider is Lincoln City Municipal Code 1788050D, which requires the amendment must comply and conform with all comprehensive plan goals, policies, as well as the land use map. The regulation amendments must be consistent with provisions of Organ Transportation Rule, Planning Rule, OAR 661120060, and the statewide goals. To provide a specific, the findings must provide evidence that the proposed amendment is in conformance with the statewide land use planning goals and policies. So staff has recognized a few things for the public's consideration, as well as the city council's consideration as you move forward with the ordinances in your packet tonight after tonight's public hearing. Want to present these for consideration for the public, as well as use your testimony this evening. The draft language tends to be specific to the area being proposed for the map amendment. Should the council desire the area, this designation, in other parts of town later, the specific language in the text may need to be adjusted to read as goals and policies instead of standards, so that it can be applied in other parts of town with the same desires. In addition, the recreation-resort designation requires for any future additional proposal to designate a ratio of that 1.5 to 1, and this will likely create market limitations for use of this designation in other areas of town, and want to be upfront with that. In addition, the Planning Commission recommended a 20% affordability requirement for the residential designation, and that was based upon the information they received of the funds to purchase the portion of land that the city owns. However, I failed to note to the Planning Commission that evening that there is more land being designated that is outside of the ownership of the city, and therefore, it could be considered, that 20% minimum could be a hindrance for the implementation later down the road for those private property owners that are not the city who already owns the land. With those and with that awareness, I do recommend that the city council open the public hearing tonight, consider testimony, provide staff with any directions, and as you are aware, we have a wide variety of ordinances on our agenda tonight that pertain to this public hearing. I'm available for any questions before the hearing, if you so desire.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could you flip back on that bottom 20%? Could you run through that again?
Yeah, so the Planning Commission, based upon testimony, was informed that when the city was able to purchase a large portion of the area under consideration for the map amendment, that 20% of those funds was used from the affordable housing budget. And with that, the Planning Commission recommended that it, for, that in the future, 20% of the housing units in that area should be available for the AMI of 80 to 125%. However, we did not purchase all of the property in the proposal for this land use designation, and so there's some careful consideration that would need to be discussed, and if that 20% requirement for lands that the city did not purchase with affordable housing funds, is that appropriate to, to add that requirement to those other lands?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Council, essentially, the Planning Commission was applying facts from the property to the text amendment, but that's not how it works. I mean, the reason why I took the CPA 2019-02 and divided it into four ordinances was to make it clear that in one ordinance, we're creating the flume designations, and in another ordinance, we're applying them, and we don't use a specific property in the funds that we used in 2014 to buy a property as a reason to create a standard for future development. There's an inclusionary zoning problem, and if, when we get to ordinance 39, I've got some alternate language there to address that.
Thank you. Other questions? Lindsay, staying with that, could you go into a little detail? I had, besides that question on the 20% affordability, back to the open space, 1.5 acres for every one acre developed, and why we wouldn't on this map dedicate, or identify early the already wetlands and areas that aren't really buildable, so that when we sell portions or to a developer, they already know, and we've already dedicated those spaces that are inappropriate for development to open space? Why?
I'm going to move back to this map here. So as you, as council is aware, the village's master plan was very specific in its preservation of some open space in critical areas, as well as the water bodies. The analysis of those areas was done in the mid-'90s. That plan is still valid till January of 2023. So development could occur under the village's master plan, completely outside of the work that's being done here. That plan would require the preservation and retention of a large amount of area that is critical. However, the Lincoln City Land Development Code... if developed under our new zoning standards or development agreement utilizing this land use designation, would require new environmental studies, because environmental studies are only vested for a maximum of five, specifically wetland studies, maximum of five years under our standards. The maps that we have and the data that we have information on is our best available information. However, we have not funded the opportunity to go out and do an ecological survey of the site in the last 15 or 20 years to truly know what kind of changes there have been in that area. So while we show a lot of green, we show a lot of waterways, we show what we think is there. Without the ecological studies, my department could not approve any future planning documents without having the most current up-to-date information. Now, your question is extremely valid, that why wouldn't we do that? That would be something that I think the council would want to consider as your next budget consideration as property owners, if that is something that you would like to do in advance of any future change in this property.
Yeah. Your Honor, council, to follow on that point, you basically could contract to update the village's master plan and update the environmental information and draw those lines around the sensitive lands, so that when you do convey through negotiated agreements, properties, pods, development pods, that basically are unburdened with environmental constraints on the property. We could have, probably for the city's purposes, applying to our own property, we could have probably said, 35% of your property has to be set aside in open space, because the city could probably meet that with the village's property when we get to, you know, there's the creation of the text amendment, and then there's the application of it in the map amendment to the property. But we'd have to wait to apply it if we set that high a standard. Whereas we know right now, the acreage of the Knoll and that property, it meets that lesser standard. Plus, not everybody could get the advantage of this zone if we set the bar that high. Not that we shouldn't strive to do that refinement in the master plan process through the, you know, in the city budget to move this project forward.
Maybe I'm missing the point. It sounds like, and this is where Councilor Hohlin was going, but I don't mean to speak for you. But with this, are we not asking a potential buyer of the city property, whatever, to buy two and a half acres so they can develop one?
No.
No.
We're, we're already, we're, we are requesting the flume amendment. We are paying that price.
With the designation of the Knoll.
And that's why the Knoll designation has already met that hurdle?
Yeah.
Is what, okay. That helps.
If, if, if there was ever to be more than 22.5 acres of the resort recreation somewhere else in town, additional lands would need to be dedicated under the proposed language tonight.
That's, that's weird.
Why does one want that? What is the sell here? Other than saying, I have this designation, and just so you know, this acre, there's another acre and a half somewhere else that's open space. Why not the business just have a commercial license and have another acre somewhere else and tell people? I don't get the sell here, or the point of creating this whole thing. I'm having trouble with why we need to do this. Other than, there was something else with the state or something that we wanted this designation or something to show the state that we're doing something.
Yeah, we.
Right?
We're trying to make sure that the state doesn't think we're willy-nilly giving out commercial land use designation, or mixed use in this case, land use designations, that we're exacting something. And in addition, now, we have, if you read the findings, you'll see for the map change, you'll see that we have more residential land that we, than we need. So we made the justification for the change to this mixed-use, commercial-related designation. But we're also saying it's going to take a significant commitment to the environment. Originally, this was called the environmentally sensitive mixed-use designation. So because we're kind of looking at the villages going, what's the one thing that's real clear about this property? It's very environmentally sensitive. And we backed it off and went and made it more generic. But the fact is, is that we didn't want to appear to be giving it away, especially giving it to ourselves, without exacting a cost. So in addition to making the findings that we need this kind of mixed use in the city, especially an employment center, generator of tourism and employment, we're trying to make the case that we weren't going to give that designation away.
So in this, in that centered part, that, so we have two proposed zones, right?
Designations.
Designations, thank you. The one designation will have the tighter constraints of you have to have an acre and a half. In that area, if you don't meet it, can you still buy and develop in that tighter area?
So the finding, the central part, that one and a half to one has been met already with the 35 acres of the Knoll that was designated in 2014?
That we will still own it?
Yep.
And then we will sell it, and they're not required to do it?
Yeah.
The Knoll, I think that. Okay, so the 22.5 acres is designated as resort recreation and would be applicable with whatever, whoever property owner wanted to move forward. The 1.5 set aside is already designated as open space? And so you don't have to do anything to the open space?
Check.
Ron's here. So in this, you need to look backwards and you need to look forwards. Looking backwards, anybody that develops within that red area will have already met it, because we have already designated the 35 acres.
Okay, so that's what I'm checking.
Now, looking forward, because it's a zone, it can be applied anywhere in the city. And so anybody, if somebody wanted to apply it in the southern part of the city, they would have to meet the same requirements of giving one and a half acres for one to develop. In my opinion, in all likelihood, that's the only place in the city where you will see this designation.
Yeah. Well, let's say that you're a property owner, a private property owner in the villages, and you're in close proximity to this area. And you're thinking, well, maybe I'd like two acres of this really interesting mixed-use designation. I'll dedicate four acres of my property, because those four acres aren't going to be able to be used anyway. There are steep slopes, they have wetlands, and I'll add it, add it to the environmentally sensitive areas that are already set aside. I think that could happen.
Okay.
Not leaving you yet. So the other thing I had, the recommendation from commission, planning commission was the 7.8 acres on the west of the Knoll to move it from, I don't know, was residential to open space. Could you give a little thinking on that? Because I think originally, the thought of leaving it there was somehow the open space designation has much more restrictive use. And the concern was the, if it's open, all open space, the inability to add any kind of amenities that might add to the Knoll's attraction?
And I'll paraphrase what I reviewed from the minutes, I believe in 2000, late '13, early 2014. It was considered and discussed at city council during that time. And that area, this area, this area right here, which is about 7.84 acres, was specifically left out because of the potential for residential development and the return on investments, is my understanding from reviewing the meeting minutes.
And, Your Honor, I'll echo that. That's my recollection, that it was for housing to basically climb up that hill, not all the way to the top, but to go up that hill. That's what the reason was.
So back to my concern, though, it may not be today practical for housing. But is it not, aren't we running into a great deal of congestion in that area for people parking and stuff? And wouldn't it be a good idea to have some piece of land for parking, restroom, something? And I don't think the open space designation allows that.
Correct.
That might be the reason to keep, maybe it's zoned wrong, and we don't want to build housing there. But certainly for public use that would assist in the Knoll, I don't.
It was discussed at planning commission, the challenges of having to cross private property to establish a roadway or even access to that land. You know, as we continue to consider the future of this area, there will, I agree, there will be a need for amenities that may not be authorized, or uses that may not be authorized under the open space zone, but could be utilized in our park zoning district.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A discussion that we've been having with Jeanne Sprague and with the city manager about the amenities that you're speaking of, is that the cul-de-sac? Could you point, can you point to the cul-de-sac?
The cul-de-sac, I believe, is. I'm sorry, right past, right where I'm at?
Yeah, right in there.
So at, so at the cul-de-sac, there is discussion about at least a temporary parking lot there, as well as we've also talked about, no agreement yet by anybody, but we've also talked about that that would be the place where there'd be porta-potties or whatever. Because right now, we already have that, the impact or the need of something, because we have quite a few hikers up there. So that was, that seemed like the best location, given people hiking to the Knoll. Can you point to where the Knoll is again?
Yeah, the Knoll is this white area right here.
And so if they're parking at that cul-de-sac and hiking to the Knoll from there, from that area, then they have the restroom right there by the cars.
And I understand all that and see that as a very viable item to include regardless. I know, and you know, there are people who go the shorter route. And it, there's a great deal of congestion over there. So just thinking ahead, it might be better to not put it in open space, but put it in a park designation, just to kind of preserve it for, because people are going to choose the short route, some people.
Right. And I'm not disagreeing with you, but I'm just thinking of being on the Knoll and then looking down, which is quite a distance down on that strip of 7-point-something acre there that we're talking about. And unless you build something to get down to that area, which you can't on the open space, then how do you reach the restroom?
Are you talking about building a road west from the Knoll down to northeast Neptune?
No road.
Or building something?
Pedestrian access.
To Neptune? Or are you talking from Salassee in northeast port, that corner?
I'm thinking Salassee, and I don't know where this land comes in. So, you know, when you put it on a map. But I know that Salassee area gets so congested.
Yeah, and they park right on the side of the thing right there.
A narrow road anyway.
Right, and then you have all those homeowners saying they do stuff in their yard.
Right. So I'm just suggesting not be so quick to move it into open space that is so limited of what we could, what you can do with it, just to keep it as a, maybe as a park, change it out of residential to a park, but.
Well, would it be crazy to approach the homeowner, whatever property, private property they have to cross or trailhead, and say, hey, if, would you allow us to put a little bathroom there? And we'll service it and take care of it? And call me crazy, but I mean, where else are you going to put it?
Right.
I would just, I would like to say, park, open space slash open space for our discussion going forward, because they would have to go back to the parks board and parks and rec.
The, while you're, you can initiate a change to your own property, that has not been done for this. This is kind of the planning commission telling you what they'd like to change on the village's master plan, but frankly, that's not what's before you.
Right.
You know, if you want to do separate motions later to give direction to look at parks and open space for that seven acres, that's great. But that's not actually what we're doing now.
But since it was part of the presentation, I just wanted to take advantage of.
So bring it back to us as a park, open space.
Any, any other questions? Then let me ask, does any member of the audience wish to provide comment? Please. Mr. Griffith?
My name is Steve Griffith, and I'm a hiker, and I live here in Lincoln City. And your discussion reminds me of a place I like to go hiking, and that is Cascade Head. And for six months of the year, the road to the top of Cascade Head is closed. So if you want to access Cascade Head, you need to park at Night's Landing. And there are all, lots of signs there saying you cannot park along the road. And so I park at Night's Landing, and I hike to the top of Cascade Head and back. And I see a parallel here where the designated parking for hikers to the Knoll would be at the, what did you call it?
Cul-de-sac.
The cul-de-sac. And you would prohibit hiking, parking along stretches of street where people are parking now, and direct them to that parking lot. That's all I have to say, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the record and the public hearing.
Is there a second? Second. We have a motion with a second to close the hearing and the record. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay, hearing none. And as noted, this hearing covered three, or four ordinances that we'll go through. And now, we can move to one more public hearing. And this was item five on your agenda, 5G, or G5. Okay, it is now 7:09 PM. The public hearing for file CPA and ZC 2019-03 is now open. This public hearing concerns a property owner initiated request to amend the comprehensive plan map and zoning map for a 18,000, 18,478 square foot parcel. The request is to re-designate the property from single-family residential, R-1-5, to recreational commercial. The property owner is Cho Surf Tides Family Limited Partnerships. The property is located at 1432, 1434 Northwest 31st Place, and 1502 and 1504 Northwest 31st Place, and is occupied by two newly constructed duplexes. The property owner requests the plan and map amendments so that the site may be used for a permanent use in the recreational commercial zone. The planning commission held a public hearing on this matter on September 17. The planning commission's recommendation is included in the council communication in the meeting packet. The council must take a few moments to cover some preliminary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare an ex parte contact, conflict of interest, or bias in this matter? None? All right. None? All right. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a council member to participate in this matter? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the council to consider this matter? The following statements are required to be made at the commandments of the hearing pursuant to City Code and ORS 197.7635. Staff will now read a list of applicable substantive criteria for this decision.
Thank you, Mayor. The applicable criteria for this decision are the comprehensive plan goals, the statewide planning goals, the Lincoln City Transportation System Plan, and the Lincoln City zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Before the staff report, I'd like to summarize the public hearing procedures which have been adopted by the city council. A brochure outlining procedures is at the entrance of the council chambers. Generally, the order of proceedings will be as follows: preliminary matters and required statements, staff report, questions of staff, applicant's presentation, those in favor of the application, those opposed, rebuttal by applicant, requests of constituencies, contingencies, or to leave the record open, close of the hearing, close of the record, request to submit written argument, deliberations, and decision. The city established a time limit. The applicant-appellant will have fifteen minutes and may reserve up to five minutes of that time to rebuttal. For the applicant, after the applicant testifies, any person may speak up to three minutes. If the commission council has questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name and mailing address clearly on the sign-up list at the entrance. Speak directly into the microphone, and then begin by stating your name. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy of the record. Please present your staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Anne Marie Skinner, Senior Planner in the Community Development and Planning Department. As the mayor has stated, this is case file CPA ZC 2019-03, and this is for the Surf Tides Speech Resort Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Zone Change Request. The subject property has a tax map and lot number of 07-11-03-DC-13100. As shown on the screen and stated in the staff report, the property owner is Cho Surf Tides Family Limited Partnership. The site is located, and I am going to, at the northwest corner of the Northwest Thirty First Street, Jettie Avenue intersection. The site is addressed as 1432, 1434, 1502, and 1504 Northwest Thirty First Place. It currently has a comprehensive plan designation of single-family residential, which is R5, and a zoning classification of single-family residential, R-1-5. The site consists of approximately eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-eight square feet, and it contains two duplexes. The surrounding uses and zones are as follows, and I'm going to click to the next screen which shows the zones, which I will now describe. Northeast of the site, the uses are a park and residences, and the zones are P for park and R-1-5. Northwest of the site is the Surf Tides Plaza condos, and that is zoned recreation commercial. South and east of the site are residences, as well as immediately south is tennis court, right here, tennis court, basketball court. And that area is all zoned R-1-5. West of the site, as you can see on the screen, is all zoned RC, which is recreation commercial, and uses are commercial. Immediately adjacent is the Surf Tides Speech Resort, which is also owned by the property owner of this application. And I'm actually just going to leave that map up, because that's a good reference as I'm speaking, rather than having boring words on the screen. Just some brief background of the property. There was a building permit filed for the two duplexes that currently exist on the site. Prior to that, the site contained a five-plex, and that five-plex operated as Surf Tides cottages. There were no building permits in the file for that original five-plex, but there was a letter dated February 7, 1997, which requested that the property owner affixed the address number to the structure at the main entrance, which indicates that the site has been developed with a structure since at least 1997. Work was done in 2003 to remove the westernmost unit of the five-plex, which left it as a four-plex. And then, between 2003 and 2018, the four-plex was removed, and it was replaced with the two duplexes that are currently on the site. The building permit application for those duplexes was submitted in March 2018. The permits were issued May 7 of 2018, and construction was completed in 2019, with the subsequent residential certificates of occupancy being issued for both duplexes on April 8, 2019. Shortly thereafter, on May 18, 2019, an application was filed for authorization for use of one of the four units, which is 1504 Northwest Thirty First Place, to be used as an accessory vacation rental dwelling. The reason for the request as an accessory is that the vacation rental dwelling limit in the R-1-5 has been reached, or had been reached at the time that that 10% cap had been reached. When that is, when that cap has been reached in the R-1-5 zone, a unit may be utilized as an accessory vacation rental dwelling unit for no more than thirty nights per year. Thus, the application. That was approved. Subsequent to the authorization of that approval, the space on the waiting list for a full-time vacation rental dwelling became available, and accordingly, the property owner now has authorization for 1504 Northwest Thirty First Place as a full-time vacation rental dwelling. Pursuant to Lincoln City Municipal Code 17.80.050B1, a person may have ownership interest in no more than one dwelling unit in a residential zone that is authorized for use as a vacation rental dwelling, which thus precludes the property owner from using the other three dwelling units as either accessory or full-time vacation rental dwelling units. If rezoned, the owner may use the property for any of the uses in the RC zone. The city's comprehensive plan states that the commercial recreation district is provided for those commercial uses, having a strong tourist orientation, such as motels, restaurants, recreational outlets, gift and souvenir shops. The purpose of this zoning district is to encourage the development of certain areas having a quality resort character to enhance their attractiveness, with special attention being paid to design and landscaping. In the staff report, I listed all of the allowed uses in the recreation commercial zone. I will not read all of those, because there are quite a few, but motels and resorts, eating or drinking establishments, gift shops, those are at the top of the list, as well as single-family dwellings and duplexes. Vacation rental dwellings are also allowed as a permitted use in the RC zone. There are a number of conditional uses that are allowed in the RC zone as well, and if this was approved, the site would be available for any of the outright permitted uses, as well as applying for any of the conditional uses. The RC zone does not require a minimum lot size. The RC zone has no requirements for lot width or depth, and the RC zone has a minimum setbacks of five feet, with the side and rear setback being increased by one-half foot for each foot by which the building height exceeds fifteen feet. And in this particular case, the site and the existing structures meet all of those requirements in the RC zone. So, if the application request was approved, there would be no nonconformities as a result of the approval. The Planning Commission recommended a four to three to deny the request. A copy of that recommendation was included in your packet. A summation of that, the four commissioners who voted in favor of the recommendation for denial based their vote upon a lack of affordable and/or workforce housing in the vicinity, and the proposed rezone would exacerbate the problem by allowing use of the duplexes as full-time vacation rental dwellings, which is not consistent with Goal Six, which is the housing goal of the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan, or Goal Ten, which is the housing, which is housing of the statewide planning goals. Their second reason was the adjacent single-family residential uses to the south and east of the site, and that rezoning the site to RC would disturb the existing residential nature of the adjacent residences and violate the purpose of the R1-5 zone, which is to promote and encourage a suitable environment for family living, and to protect and stabilize the residential characteristics of the zone. The three commissioners who voted in opposition of the recommendation for denial based their vote upon Goal Seven of the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan and Goal Nine of the statewide planning goals, which is economic development. The city's comprehensive plan states that the city's primary industry is tourism, and concludes that tourism will continue to function as the city's basic industry. The city conducted an economic opportunities analysis dated April 2017. The lodging demand portion of the analysis indicates, indicated that over the next twenty years, there will be demand for approximately sixteen hundred new hotel motel rooms in Lincoln City, and lodging is one of the recommended target uses from that study. No written comments were received either before the Planning Commission hearing, nor before the city council hearing, and I will sit for questions from the council.
Great. Thank you, Anne Marie. Questions from council? Councilor Murray?
Anne Marie, was there a staff recommendation made on this zoning change?
Staff recommended approval of the request, based upon an analysis of the comprehensive goals, whoops, excuse me, of the city and the statewide planning goals.
Are we going to hear from the...
Right. Yeah, just anything, if you have questions from the staff report, any, for clarification or anything. Okay. Thank you. Now for the applicant's presentation. And mind you, it's fifteen minutes.
Give us just one minute to set up. We have to start before...
Sure.
I'm Adam Springer. This is attorney counsel returning to the office. We're done with your report. Thank you for having us tonight, Mr. Mayor and council persons. We'll wait just a minute to get started here.
Did you want to reserve some time for rebuttal, or five minutes for, so?
Why don't I just start, and hopefully get some slides up? That would be great. We'll have some pictures of the duplexes I'd like to show you.
Okay.
So, I'll go ahead and begin now. You can officially start my clock.
All right.
Again, I'm Adam Springer. Thank you for having us tonight. So, I'm the attorney for Cho Family Surf Tides Limited Partnership, who's the owner of this property, the hotel across the street, this property, as well as that tennis court property that you saw on the last map. And that property's been in the Cho family since 1969, and so it's been on for a lot of decades. It's the third-largest lodging facility in Lincoln City, the Surf Tides Resort is. And what we're asking to do is essentially an expansion of existing Surf Tides units, and to use these duplexes across the street as additional hotel units, essentially. They're going to be advertised the same way. You'll be checking in across the street at the Surf Tides Resort. You'll be checking out at the Surf Tides Resorts. You're allowed to use the Surf Tide, plainly be, you're allowed to use the Surf Tides amenities, the parking over there, as well as you have the on-staff 24-hour management, 24-hour security, and that's what we're asking for. That's the intent. And it was the chosen intent when they built these duplexes, which is the first question, I think, often people think of, why are the duplexes already, they're already completed, why are you asking me now for permission to change the use? And simply, it's been a long time since the Cho's had developed property, all right? So, they made an oversight into what uses they could make and not make of their property when they, when they developed these, went to the planning, or went to the planning department to get their permits afterwards, and went, oh, well, if you own all four of them, you can only use one of those units as a full-time vacation rental, which wasn't their, wasn't their intent. Wanted to point out that also, under the existing RC, or the, under the RC zone, they're still allowed to be used as residences as well. So, if plans were to change in the future, or to make more sense to use these as long-term rentals, or to sell them individually as residences, that that use is still available under what we're asking for today. And so, why should the city allow us to do this? And I think it comes down to, number one, it fits the stated planned goals, the state goals and the comprehensive goals of Lincoln City, and that's what the planning, or the staff found as well. Specifically, the plan says you're going to need sixteen hundred new hotel motel short-term rental units in the next twenty years, and this can provide those. It also fosters economic growth for Lincoln City, all right? You've got a fifty-five employee business here, that trying to expand and offer some different options that makes their resort more competitive, and it can bring in some new business. And one of the things that they want to be able to do is offer a house, you know, in conjunction with the resort as well. So, when you have maybe large family gatherings, business conventions, oftentimes you'll have, especially families with young children, prefer to stay in a home where there's a washing machine, a kitchen, refrigerator, more amenities that they can actually take care of young children, and use those type of, those types. And so, what's different about these than a lot of your regular vacation rentals and the problems that, if I had a dollar for every time I heard the word vacation rental in the last two years, and I'm sure you guys are, you know, more so than that, but what's different about these is you've got that onsite management, right? You've got, if a neighbor has a problem, and they say, well, I can't get a hold of anybody, and get the police to go out there, you've got somebody waiting at the front door of Surf Tides to walk right over there and deal with the situation, just as if it were a hotel guest being unruly up in one of the rooms. You've got parking, if there were any need for overflow parking... You've got parking, if there were any need for overflow parking, you've got a giant parking lot right across the street. You've got security. And that's what, so when we thought about doing this, the first thing we did was wrote a letter to all the neighbors, that were the same people that were on the mailing list for this hearing tonight, and said, this is what we're, you know, planning on doing. We'd like you to come down to Surf Tides and have a town hall, have some hors d'oeuvres on us, and chat about what we're thinking of doing, what concerns that you have, how it can be better neighbors. And we had a pretty good turnout. I think it was 10 to 20 people showed up and wanted to talk about, okay, so, you know, what are the options here? What are you thinking of doing? Why do you want to do it? And everybody ended up being very much in support, versus our first concern of, well, what about this and what about that? What we found were, a lot of the neighbors used that, the area just south for walking. They appreciate having the security there already to kind of clean up some of the problems they have in that big lot that's zoned R-1 but has the tennis court. And that they appreciated the Surf Tides as a neighbor, and being able to use their amenities and things like this, where they wanted that, they thought that was not a bad idea to have vacation rentals, didn't bother anybody. I don't think you'll see anybody here behind me in opposition from the neighborhood. We haven't heard any opposition from the neighborhood whatsoever. So I think, you know, part of what the Planning Commission had said was, it's not really consistent with the residential character of a neighborhood. You're going to ruin the, you're not going to hear any of the neighbors telling you that today, as I don't believe so anyways. And that's different for that reason among one of them. So I want to talk a little bit about what's kind of wrong with the arguments that the Planning Commission said, well, this is why we don't want to approve it, and this is why we don't want to do it. And one, they said, well, this is, doesn't, the affordable housing problem is there already, and this isn't helping it in any way. All right? And so, wish I had my pictures of my duplexes up right now, but, thank you. Had a comparative market analysis done on these duplexes, and just, to be frank, they're not affordable housing. And one unit in this duplex, so one of the 40 units is about 335,000 apiece, over 600 for one of the, one of the buildings. And with monthly rents recommended by the realtor, starting from the 1,800 and 2,000 a month, it's not what would fit the definition that we just heard, kind of, for what affordable housing is in Lincoln City, being 80 to 120 percent of median family income. You're not pulling anything out of affordable housing stock. Right? And so I do understand the affordable housing issue, and that I think everybody agrees it's there. What we oftentimes don't talk about is, it's really not going to be your developers and your businesses that are going to go out and, on their own, create affordable housing. There needs to be incentive to do that. And I felt as if the Planning Commission, a bit, wanted to make Cho family's responsibility to create affordable housing in this spot. And that's not the way I see it. According to the plan, the comprehensive plan, there's almost 1,200 acres, 1,124 acres of developable residential property in Lincoln City. All right? And so if there is an affordable housing crisis, and it needs to do something about it, then we need to be incentivizing people to develop those, develop affordable housing in those units, right? So we're not taking anything away from affordable housing now. And as far as disturbing the character of the neighborhood, again, this, the neighborhood that we're talking about isn't, it's already got a laundry resort across the street, right? You're not going to talk about a big traffic change, people never came down my street before, and now they are. No, this is a, this is a very much a commercial area of Lincoln City. Everywhere west of Jettie there, you have a hotel, you've got condominiums right next that are kind of, I would say, mostly vacation, vacation home condominiums, where most of the mailing addresses are from Portland anyways, next to, next bar. So don't have that same issue of, this used to be a really quiet street, and now we have all this going on. And I do think, though, that maybe one of the biggest factors in everybody's mind here is this is a slippery slope, right? If we say yes to your request here, we've already dealt with this whole vacation issue, we put it away, we've got the rules now, and here comes this guy trying to change the rules a little bit, so this vacation rental is different. All right? Things I want to say about that are, one, it's not precedent, in that it's not binding precedent that it sets the next, you know, somebody comes up here. These are unique, fact-specific situations. I don't think you're going to find too many places like this that have the zoning that they do. Hey, duplexes. You're not going to find too many places that have the zoning that they do, where you have this property that's adjacent to a major resort owned by the same resort. It's fact-specific. I don't think there's this big, there's going to be a run on the, a run on zone changes all of a sudden. And it's, it really does fit with the neighborhood character that's already there, residential. Even this one, let me go one more slide back to the map. Even the zone that we're talking about is residential, or with RC being everywhere to the left of that property, and it's kind of a weird shaped lot, obviously, set in kind of the middle there, there's, it's not just one commercial, commercial zone in the middle of a residential neighborhood. That's not the way I see it. It really kind of fits in with the rest of the property, especially considering the place to the south is an undeveloped tennis court, for now, recreation area, that's kind of used in conjunction with the hotel. Slippery slope argument is always, always one that's, I understand it, but we really need to nail the specifics. It still fits all the planning goals and everything else about it. You're still going to have to make a decision if there really is this run on people making the same request. You'll see it, and they're going to have to come to this council and ask you and tell you about, you know, their reasons why their property is different. And then if the neighborhood and the neighbors are concerned, like many of the areas where they have, and they brought their concerns to you, I imagine they'd be here to tell you about it. And you'll know when that's not the situation, when what the person up here right now, like I am, is telling you isn't the truth, somebody's going to be here to let you know that. So, last thing I wanted to address is, well, you're not just constrained to using these as duplexes as units for the motel. So you could, you know, tear these, theoretically tear these brand-new duplexes down and start some new commercial use. What's going to prevent, what's going to prevent them from doing that? And what I've said in the application essentially was, we're willing to do a development agreement if the council is worried that that's going to happen. Now, what I can tell you is, brand-new development, they just invested a substantial amount of money, and there's no plan to tear that down right now and do some other commercial use. Thank you.
You've got, we're just reserving your five minutes, so you've got five minutes if you wanted.
I'll reserve it for if there is any testimony opposition.
All right. Great. Any questions of council?
I have.
For clarification? Yes, councilman?
Could you go back to your slide of the duplexes? They're very nice. But my question is, when you were talking about the monthly rate for renting, if that's what you do?
Yes.
And how many bedrooms are there because there is a general?
There's a three-bedroom per, per unit.
In each one of them?
Each one of them. So when I say unit, I'm taking dwelling units, so we're four total units.
Right, I understand. Okay, I was just trying to. And how many square feet in each unit?
I think it's 1,200 a unit.
Okay. Thanks, I was just curious.
Other questions? Councilman?
How many do they sleep?
So with three bedrooms, I think the, depends on how you consider.
Well, it's, it's all, that's what the question is. How many are they marketed to sleep?
Well, they're not.
It's bedrooms, and then there's a game room, and there's a TV room, and all of them have bedrooms. Or are they legitimately, you know, six people?
They legitimately have beds. I believe the, just, I know that we have a restriction on the current, one unit that does have a VRD license.
Right, there's a 16-person, right? But I mean, what are they?
Three persons per bedroom plus.
Three plus one.
Plus one.
10 people.
10 per. Okay.
Two persons per bedroom plus.
It's three, three plus one.
Two plus one?
Three.
Three, total?
Two.
For some reason, I have two plus one in my head, but, you know, I'm not positive.
That's all right. I'm too liberal.
That's what it is.
What? Get that done. Get that on tape.
Seven per unit was my understanding.
I noticed, it's right on a corner, I watched that, those buildings go up, and I was wondering how you would address any traffic issues that come along there. This area specific is the secret way when people go from south to north end of town. And it seems to me, when you come over that hill, if you have a lot of cars there, there could be like traffic issues. If you have 12 people there coming across the street, or going over to your restaurant, are you concerned about safety at all?
So I guess it would be nice to have a crosswalk developed there at some point in time, but from, you know, from a safety standpoint, we don't see a big change between if these were owner-occupied, owner-occupied dwellings, how much traffic would be there compared to how much they will have as short-term rentals.
If I may, it is in the city's current plan, and I don't remember exactly where, but that area of the city is currently slated to have sidewalk development and other bicycle and pedestrian developments happening. I don't know when they're supposed to happen, but it is.
It's a map. It's painted on a map right now.
It's planned somewhere.
But that might be something Surf Tides would want to, you know, donate considerably to, you know, that kind of improvement.
Might be beneficial to everyone. Your honor, council, it is three plus one.
Yeah.
It is, thank you.
I'm with you, buddy.
He's not that liberal.
Three plus one.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Is there landscaping involved? Do we, do we have landscaping requirements? Is that it? I mean, are there, is there little flowers anywhere, or have they met, have you met all the requirements for?
Well, the ones already been designated as short-term rental, then I had to met something.
Yeah, I think it's on the backside. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry if I missed this. So if the zoning is restricted to residential, will the Surf Tides retain ownership, and are these going to be long-term rentals? Are they going to try to, would they have to try to sell them, or?
I think you have to go back to the drawing board, essentially. There are multiple options. One of the options would be to sell them as individual units, that requires an additional partitioning process, possibly creating a condominium association type of situation. We have shared wall situations. They could be used as long-term rentals. That's not, never has been a part of Surf Tides business and business model to do long-term rentals. You know, they could be essentially sold to four individual owners who could all come back with vacation rental request and all be approved, without the same, you know, without the same restriction. That's, that's a potential there as well.
Like the condos?
Yeah.
Right. Are they built to commercial standards? Are they built to residential standards?
They're built to residential standards. But they, I mean, they pass all the.
There's no fire sprinkler systems, or fire retardation, or any kind of?
It's my understanding now.
Okay.
Counselor?
When you had this meeting of the neighborhood, did they understand that they were becoming vacation rentals? Or did you just have a meeting? I know usually we have meetings after vacation rental licenses are about to be submitted or, you know, approved. And then that's when people give comments. So did they know that this would be a VRD issue?
Explicitly and specifically, yes. That's never beat around the bush in any way of, you know, why this is being, this is being proposed, and what's going to happen there.
Couple of comments I have, and I appreciated your remarks and the way you laid them out. I guess a couple of thoughts, you know, studies are studies, and I love the 1,600 or 16,000 or whatever number for future need for rentals. I don't know where that is, but I find that interesting, because you've got to have infrastructure, water, sewer, streets to handle that. There may be demand, but having that kind of demand would help elevate rents as well if you don't have the supply. So I take that as a reason, as kind of a grain of salt. The other, the affordable housing issue, I found that interesting, too, that Planning Commission threw that out as an objective, because I agree with your comments. Quite frankly, in Lincoln City, any housing stock at any price range or rent range is needed. So what this has done has, in essence, used up some developable land. So I would agree with your comments on affordability, but that doesn't preclude it from, you know, ownership or rental at a price range that some people can afford. The other, as you put up your map with the zoning look, I wrote down Crepe as a big concern for me, and that's, you tried to address it with, you know, you're exactly right. We went through a hellacious process with VRDs, and as you can see from northwest Jettie, it's kind of the demarcation line of commercial and residential. And it has proven to be worthwhile having a solid line. And I'm a little concerned of, you know, jettisoning in on the east side of that line with some RC or, or anything. And the Crepe would be the short-term rental aspect. Because I can hear your, tomorrow, the neighbors right around you then saying, well, he's got it. I like that idea. It's a nice way to get around the cap. And all I have to do is the same argument of see where the zones are, and now I can point directly to the southwest and say, there's one, so we're attached. So I'm, quite honestly, my hesitancy is because we've done a nice job of holding, holding the line, and that does hold continuity on the east side of Jettie. But I appreciated your remarks in addressing them, but that's probably my biggest fear is, once it starts, because that's kind of the same argument I heard 10 years ago for other things. But I appreciate it.
The other thing I would just mention is that, you know, I think at some point in time, there's a large R-1 right below it, too. And as needs of the business expand, and demand for tourism does expand, you know, you could anticipate a similar request just south to, you know, that property. When they bought that in 1969, there were no zoning laws, right? And so the Surf Tide villages that were just north that used to be on this property were essentially a nonconforming use after they set the zoning up. And it discontinued for too many years to be a nonconforming use now.
What I'd hope, quite frankly, that you would, that would happen, is there's a lot of tired rental motel rooms and structures in this community. Be nice to, rather than expand east, you know, to buy a old tired one and refurbish it, and that would, rather than expanding. That way you can use that R-1 zone for your workforce, be close at home.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to correct the discussion that's been happening about what the Planning Commission recommended. They recommended, or the four votes against this was because of lack of affordable and/or workforce housing. It wasn't just affordable.
Any other comments? Let me, if I can, keep going with, see if, see if we've got anybody for testimony and support of the application. Please, come forward. You want the maps up or anything, or? Nope, don't go away. Don't kill it.
My name is Shelley, and I'm actually a resident about.
Shelley, could you give us your last name, too?
Oh, Edgar. I live right off of, I want to say it's 28th Street, about a block from here.
Okay.
And I'm in support of these. I have to say, I've actually been very pleased having a vacation property on my block. They tend to be very well-maintained, and we don't have a lot of problems with them. Also, if you recall, I think you referred to it as the R-1 zone, that area with, is densely, a lot of trees in that area. I live right, my block ends at that. We're getting a lot of problems with people coming out that have been living in those trees. So to have the regular security there, I think, would be beneficial. The security around that area, around where those homes, those homes kind of back up to that. So any security going around there, I think, would be beneficial, just to see the presence of somebody. And also, my heart just about dropped when I heard, we're looking at the need of about 1,600 more rooms, possibly, in Lincoln hotel rooms. 1,600 more rooms possibly in Lincoln hotel rooms. And actually, this would be kind of a creative out-of-the-box solution. They tend to blend in more than some of these monstrosities that are going up. So I like how it blends right into the neighborhood.
Great, nice architecture. Thank you very much for coming up. Anyone else that wishes to testify for the applicant? Let's see, is there any testimony in opposition to the applicant? Hearing none? Great. Any testimony from representatives of public agencies? And you want to use up your last five minutes?
I thought I had something.
All right. Thank you very much. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Please. Oh, she just watched her.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
I don't know if it would be helpful for you guys further.
Oh, we got... Okay, so ORS Section 197.763, Paragraph 6A states that, "Upon request, the council must either grant a continuance for no less than seven days or hold the record open for no less than seven days to permit an applicant an opportunity to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence. Does any person who participated desire to request a continuance to provide additional testimony, argument, or evidence, or requests the record to be left open to submit additional written testimony, argument, or evidence?" You deny the, don't need, okay? Thank you. I don't hear from anyone else. So...
We need a motion to close the public hearing and the record.
Yep, so the applicant waived the opportunity.
That's after. First, you need to close the public hearing and the record.
Oh, really?
Then you ask the applicant if he wants to waive.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll move that we close the public hearing and the record.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing and the record. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? All right. Now, I'll ask you again for the record. Does the applicant waive the opportunity to submit final written argument after the close of the record? It's waived. Thank you. Okay, so it would now be time for deliberation.
Will you motion first? We could just talk about it.
If you have questions, talks, if you want to... What are you thinking?
I think if I were on the Planning Commission, I would have voted with the no side and turned this around, and it seems like a nice use of that property, and I, it seemed, it certainly seems to conform with that neighborhood. And so I have no problem with having that used as a, I appreciate the investment and some beautiful buildings, and I'd like to see the, I'd like to see the business make the use of the building as they intended.
Anybody want to make any kind of clarification, discussion, statement, things you heard? Otherwise, we can go, certainly go to a motion and deliberate in that, so depending on denial of the application or approval of the application. Yes, counselor?
I just have a little comment.
Okay.
I understand that they did meet all the goals, transportation and whatever, but I have concerns about the housing goals for R1-5. And it is, it's a lovely area, and they've done a good job. I'd be, I think, supportive of maintaining the R1-5 zone.
Did somebody want to make a motion? All right, counselor? No?
Maybe. Let me get back to, I just want to make a comment first that, that in the staff report, there is no option for a motion. I just found that kind of odd. But if we're looking at a motion, I have one, if I can. But before I do, I just wanted to say why I'm making the motion the way I am, is that our, every year, we prioritize our work, and we try to stick to it, and housing is at the top of our list, workforce and affordable. So my motion is to deny the request of the change of zoning for CPA and ZC 2019-03.
Is there a second? Second. We have a motion to deny the request with a second from Counselor Parsons. Further deliberation, statements, comments?
I think that they'll still be able to use this, and that as intended use. You saw on the report that they got the VRD license quicker than anticipated, and as this is probably the intention, as it cycles through, they'll, I see that they'll still be able to use this as a short-term rental and get that designation as VRD. Those duplexes. Or the other one, rather, because it's a duplex, right? So they can use it anyway. And that east side thing, I think, is a very slippery thing, as you stated.
Other comments? And let's do a roll call. So the motion was to deny. Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Mark?
No.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So the motion to deny the application is upheld.
Your Honor, the staff will return with findings for your approval at a future meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. We now move to ordinances. Ordinances, we have a long list. What I'd like to do tonight is cover number eight, and it has an adjoining partner, number 13. So if we could go to eight and 13, I'd appreciate it, because they both deal with the development agreement. And then, to knock some of these out, then come back and do 12, 12, 14, 15, 16, and 17, and then finish up with the 9, 10, and 11. I figure there's going to be more talk on 9, 10, and 11. Sound all right? If we could, then, let's look at ordinance number 2019-32, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan. This has to do with the negotiated development agreements to modify.
Your Honor, counsel, this is the first reading of ordinance 2019-32, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan, land use goals, policies, and map to authorize negotiated development agreements to modify or exempt development from otherwise applicable provisions of the Zoning and Land Development Code. I have no changes to read for this ordinance. Again, this ordinance is one of four ordinances which comes out of Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2019-02. This is the simplest one, and it simply authorizes development agreements in the Comprehensive Plan. Ask for approval of first reading of the ordinance.
Oh, we might as well, yep, please.
So moved.
So moved. We have a motion with a second from Counselor Parsons for the first reading. Oh, yeah.
I just have a question.
Yeah, please.
And I probably should have asked this at a work session or something, but the whole concept of development agreements, is this a, it feels like a way to sort of cut through red tape and maybe simplify the process if a plan, you know, doesn't quite adhere to all the zoning rules? Rather than having to apply for a variance and go through all those steps, the planning department and the developer can sort of work it out?
Well, it is, it is a negotiated agreement. It is not a by right agreement. It's not in the manner of a variance. It's more like if the code authorizes modifications with the development agreement, then you can do modifications. If it doesn't authorize it, you can't. An example would be, you know, the zoning code says, when using a development agreement, you can set your own building height, as long as you don't violate the city charter. If the code says that, then that's one of the negotiable items in a development agreement. So it provides flexibility. It also allows you to, as was suggested during the public hearing, limit the uses that you're going to do. You can say, hey, don't worry about all these other RC uses, I'm just going to do this. So you can contractually commit to something and limit yourself. There's a number of different ways to use it. It's a tool in our toolbox.
So if I can, I think we talked about this at work sessions too, though development agreements have been around, we've used them. So why this ordinance? What makes this ordinance necessary now?
It fleshes it out, so, you know, if you're a developer, you want to know, you want to know, what am I facing? What am I going to be looking at when I come in for this? So this ordinance, this ordinance actually just authorizes in the Comprehensive Plan, number 30, which we're going to do next, is the one that establishes the development agreement ordinance. So this is just establishing some authority in the Comprehensive Plans for consistency purposes. The next ordinance, ordinance 30, is the one that actually sets forth the standards in terms of development agreement, including authorizes you to adopt a more or less standard form that you expect to see your agreement in this manner.
Counselor Casper?
Okay, I need a little education here. You talk about development agreement and a statutory development agreement. What's the difference between the two?
Same, they're the same thing.
Okay.
We simply started using the word statutory development agreement because the Urban Renewal Agency uses the term disposition and development agreement, and we wanted to make sure that we were making distinction between those two things.
Okay, because I first saw that term on page 63, and I wasn't sure what that was. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this, then? We have a motion for, to approve first reading. Oh, we have one of our, one, two, three, four, five. We're okay, though. We can do a roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, counsel, this is second reading ordinance 2019-32, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan, land use goals, policies, and map to authorize negotiated development agreements to modify or exempt development from otherwise applicable provisions of the Zoning and Land Development Code. Ask for approval of second reading and approval of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll move that we approve second reading and adopt ordinance 2019-32.
Second. We have a second motion and a second from Counselor Parsons. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great.
Thank you very much. Now staying with the theme of development agreements, let's jump to 13.
Your Honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance 2019-30, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning to add a new chapter 1796, development agreements to establish procedures and requirements for consideration or approval of statutory development agreements. I have one thing to read, however. Because the ordinance you just read changed between the time we did first reading, I have to read the findings have the updated language. So the findings provide, "Note: Development agreements authorized. A negotiated ORS Chapter 94 development agreement may be used to provide flexibility or contractual commitments for development within designated future land use map flume designations and/or specified zoning districts, or for annexations. The plan or code will specify the land use modifications or bonuses available when using a development agreement. For example, the recreation, resort, mixed-use, flume designation may only be implemented with a statutory development agreement. A zoning district may also specify that a standard, for example, building height, is negotiable when using a development agreement. The development agreement may provide for modification and flexibility in varying ways, including variations in lot size, setbacks, and the internal transportation network. Density bonuses for additional preservation of natural areas, tourist attractions, vertical mixed use, tourist and community commercial services, and workforce housing, including affordability covenants, may also be authorized under the appropriate land use and zoning designations. A development agreement provides for some specific vesting of development rights and protection against new regulations, and authorizes a timetable of development up to the 15-year maximum in the statute to project completion. A development agreement, ordinance, and standard form are specifically authorized. Development agreements must be recorded against the real property for documentation." Again, that's just a change to the findings which are incorporated into the ordinance. So ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance 2019-30 with the changes as read.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Counselor Hinton and a second from Counselor Hoagland. I might remind, even though it was said, that we had the first reading on September 23rd, and then these were the changes that we were kind of waiting for, so. Any further questions regarding development agreements? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Kuz, meaning the Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. All right, let's move to number 12, ordinance number 219-37.
Your Honor, counsel. Your Honor, counsel, this is first reading ordinance 2019-37, an ordinance amending Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, amending Chapter 1780, provisions applying to special uses, Section 178110, accessory dwelling unit standards, to remove owner occupancy and parking requirements consistent with Oregon law. Ask for approval of first reading. Just by way of explanation, your honor, counsel, this is through an abbreviated process authorized by the Oregon revised statutes, which allows us to conform our code to state statute. In this case, the legislature has clarified that we may not have an owner occupancy requirement, and we may not require an additional parking for an accessory dwelling unit. Those provisions are inapplicable if it's a vacation rental, but we do not authorize vacation rentals, so ask for approval of first reading.
Motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve first reading ordinance 2019-37.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve with a second from Counselor Mark.
Can I have a comment?
Yes.
My comment is that I understand that we do have to pass this. We don't have, we don't have any other options. I just don't like it, but I just want to say that out loud.
We don't find disagreement. One more time, the state likes to get into our business.
We have a motion with a second.
Any other deliberation, questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
And Hoagland? Motion carries.
Your Honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance 2019-37, an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, amending Chapter 1780, provisions applying to special uses, Section 178110, accessory dwelling unit standards, to remove owner occupancy and parking requirements consistent with Oregon law. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt the second reading of ordinance 2019-37 and accept...
Approve second reading and adopt the ordinance.
Approve second reading and adopt the ordinance.
Second. We have a motion to approve and a second from Counselor Parsons. Deliberation and roll call, please.
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great.
Thank you. All right, let's move to number 12. Ordinance number 219-37.
Your honor, counsel, this is first reading ordinance 2019-37, an ordinance amending Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, amending Chapter 1780, provisions applying to special uses, Section 178110, accessory dwelling unit standards, to remove owner occupancy and parking requirements consistent with Oregon law. Ask for approval of first reading. Just by way of explanation, your honor, counsel, this is through an abbreviated process authorized by the Oregon revised statutes, which allows us to conform our code to state statute. In this case, the legislature has clarified that we may not have an owner occupancy requirement, and we may not require an additional parking for an accessory dwelling unit. Those, those provisions are inapplicable if it's a vacation rental, but we do not authorize vacation rentals. So ask for approval of first reading.
Motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve first reading ordinance 2019-37.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve with a second from Counsel Mark. And a second from Counsel Parsons. Deliberation? None? Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance 2019-34, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17, zoning, Chapter 1772, sign regulations, amending Section 1772060, special conditions, standards, and limitations by zoning district, amending chapter, sorry, amending paragraph C2 to affirm, extend, and reinstate the allowance for feather banners for an additional six months. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve second reading and adopt ordinance 2019-34.
Second. We have a motion from Counsel Mark and a second from Counsel Parsons. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we keep going with our long list. Ordinance number 2, 2019-35, and this is retention of records.
Your honor, counsel, this is first reading ordinance 2019-35, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 2, administration and personnel, Chapter 2.52, retention of records, Section 2.52020, destruction procedure. By, ask for approval of first reading. What this ordinance does is simply removes a form from the code and removes the requirement that the mayor approve the destruction of records.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Make a motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2019-35.
We have a motion to approve, Counsel Parsons?
I'll second.
Who's still? Counsel Mark? Thank you. Any questions?
Does the mayor like to hoard records?
I feel slighted. I just want you to know that this was a personal, you know, called me out in the ordinance, is not viable, I guess, any longer. And I don't hear any of you standing up for it.
Well, did you enjoy that part of your job?
Yeah, I've signed lots of documents. So obviously, there's no discussion on this. It's going to be helpful.
Is it something that you want to do?
Is there a reason?
No. I, yeah. I think if we look at it, it, there's enough names on there and titles of folks who have to go through it. There's no sense adding one more. So I do appreciate it. How about a roll call, please?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance 2019-35, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 2, administration and personnel, Chapter 2.52, retention of records, Section 2.52020, destruction procedure. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Have a motion?
Make a motion to approve second reading and adopt ordinance 2019-35.
I'll second.
Who's the all? Counsel Mark? Okay.
Don't recognize my voice.
Right. We have a motion to approve and with a second. All, oh, roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
And Hoagland?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. If you don't mind, this might be a good time to acknowledge our city recorder thinking of records. And, you know, I know records and record is just a small part, but Kathy Steer was selected by her trade association, the Oregon Association of Municipal Recorders, as their second vice president of the association. I think that's very nice. Thank you, Kathy, for serving and taking a leadership role. Thanks. If we could, go to 16, and this, we're into the wireless telecommunications business, obviously.
Your honor, this is a second reading. Again, we've completed first reading at the September meeting. This is second reading of ordinance 2019-28, an ordinance of the city of Lincoln City, amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 12, streets, sidewalks, and public places, adding a new Chapter 1226, small wireless telecommunications facilities, to establish procedures and requirements for consideration and approval of wireless telecommunications facilities in city rights of way. I do have some changes. I provided them to you. They were sitting on your table here when you showed up. I did also send you a confidential email sharing some information from outside council. As you recall, this was continued at my request, the second reading was, because we wanted to hear from outside council on one last review. You had some comments during the first hearing consideration, and I suggested changes. I neglected to suggest, to send those to outside council. I did, I made sure I got them. Today, he got back to me. So the bad news is, one of the things you wanted to do, we can't do. And I sent you the, and I understand, but I sent you the FCC order so you, you knew I wasn't just making it up. So the changes are in the, just the captions or the index, 1226130, removal and disposal of obsolete property. He said there's no problem with that one, by the way. And 1226140, severability and savings. And then the next change would occur in Section 1226030F, which actually was not in the original ordinance, but F, which provided that wireless facilities shall not be sighted in locations in the city where the city or urban renewal agency has paid to underground all utilities such as Highway 101, undergrounding project in the vicinity of the D River. That can't be included. If you go to the next page, I, the language in item five, this is B5, is slightly modified. It now reads, if a network provider wishes to install cabinets and equipment that exceeds these limitations, the installation will be subject to the wireless communications facilities provision of LCMC 1752270, and all of, all the associated standards for such facilities will be applied. Very similar language in paragraph six on page 10. If the network provider wishes to install equipment that exceeds this maximum, the installation will be subject to the wireless communications provisions in LCMC 1752270, and all the associated standards for such facilities will be applied. Again, these are tweaks based on outside council's review. Under antennas, this is also under 1226050, paragraph D is modified to read, if a network provider wishes to install antenna that exceed these limitations, the installation will be subject to the wireless communication facilities provision of LCMC 1752270, and all the associated standards for such facilities will be applied. And then under G of that same section, 050, the language of G will now read, if a network provider wishes to upgrade or replace their antenna at any point during their permitted use of the right-of-way, they must remove any existing antenna which is not in use. And that is very consistent with the obsolete equipment provision that we added. What we had to remove was the limitation to two antenna. And finally, the language added from last time was 1226130, removal and disposal of obsolete equipment. As soon as practical, but not later than 30 calendar days from the date the network provider discontinues use of equipment due to obsolescence or any other reason, said equipment shall be removed from the pole if such equipment is located on the exterior of the pole. Such equipment shall be properly disposed of, and such disposals shall be documented. For all work in the right-of-way, network providers must comply with Lincoln City Municipal Code Chapter 1212 and codes adopted under Chapter 1504. And finally, 1226140, severability and savings. If the standards of this ordinance or LCMC 1752270 are found in some particular not to comply with the state and/or federal laws or regulations, the standards shall be interpreted as to be fully applicable except for the conflicting provisions which shall be applied to the maximum extent permitted under federal and state law. So with those changes as read, ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
So moved. We have a motion from Counsel Parsons. Is there a second?
Second.
Counsel Casper has seconded. I'm assuming no, oh, please.
Can I vote no? No, I, I like this overall. I just have a really hard time with having to allow a potential pole where we have just spent $3 million putting them underground. And what a spot to put one of those.
I, I think outside council feels the same way, but remember, if we prevail in the litigation, maybe this will be an example we'll use in, in making the argument that it's overstepping their bounds. So.
So can I vote no?
Vote however you like.
This is the, this is not for a particular thing. This is...
Just ordinance for guiding, yeah.
Yeah.
No specific intention or no?
No specific property is, is before us at this time. This is just establishing standards which is recommended before we have people coming in asking for approvals.
Who do this? Yeah, I'm with, yeah, I'm with that. Same mentality.
So if someone wants to put in this wireless unit, they have to get this approved. They can't just go stick a pole in the ground?
Yes. We have a, we have a priority that you're first to co-locate. So if there's an existing pole, we want you on that pole. We don't want you to put in a new pole. New poles are low priority. And we actually first want you to, well, we want you to co-locate, and you can co-locate in one of two ways. You can actually attach equipment to an existing pole if it can structurally handle it, or you can replace that pole with a new pole that's got the structural strength to have stuff in. And if you do that, all your equipment's going to be inside that pole, to the extent it can be. So that's the, that's a preference, and that's the priority in the ordinance. But we can't just say, no, you can't put it here. If it's got to be there in order for their system to work, we got to say yes. And that's, I sent you the FCC order, and they talked about expressly undergrounding, unfortunately. And that's, that, one of the good reasons why maybe that will get overturned, because it's kind of unreasonable. And there's, it isn't being challenged. It's in litigation.
It, it is.
Yes.
Yes. So, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Your honor, counsel, this is first reading of ordinance 2019-36, an ordinance amending the ordinance 2014-26, the Astound Broadband LLC Coastcom telecommunications franchise by extending the existing franchise agreement by six months under the same terms and conditions to May 12, 2012, and declaring an emergency. Ask for approval of first reading. Now, the reason why I'm asking for an emergency is because this ordinance won't be effective for 30 days, and if we waited that long, the franchise would expire. And so that's kind of an emergency. And so although it's only two days late, we didn't have a meeting two days ago, so I have to ask for an emergency. So we'll, I'll ask you for a declaration of emergency after you approve first reading.
Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 2019-36.
First reading.
Second. We have a motion to approve plus a second. Questions? Deliberation? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Typically, you just make a motion to declare that it's emergency, but I'll just read Section 7 so you know why. The existing franchise agreement with the Astound Broadband terminates on November 12, 2019. In order to avoid disruption in telecommunications service, it is necessary to adopt the ordinance approving the franchise extension by emergency enactment. The Lincoln City Charter authorizes, expressly authorizes the city council to adopt an emergency for immediate preservation of public peace, health, and safety upon making a statement declaring the basis for the emergency. Council finds and determines that conditions in the city of Lincoln City are such that this ordinance is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and welfare, and emergency is declared to exist because of imminent termination of the existing franchise. Therefore, pursuant to Chapter, the city charter, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect before the normal 30 days effective date, specifically on November 12. So I'd ask for a motion to approve the emergency declaration.
I move to approve the emergency declaration for ordinance number 2019-36.
I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the emergency with a second from Counsel Mark. Roll call, please.
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
And Hoagland?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance 2019-36, an ordinance amending ordinance 2014-26, the Astound Broadband LLC Coastcom telecommunications franchise by extending the existing franchise agreement by six months under the same terms and conditions to May 12, 2020, and declaration of an emerg, and declaring an emergency. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Entertaining motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve second reading and adopt ordinance 2019-36 as an emergency enactment.
Second.
We have a motion to approve along with a second from Counsel Casper. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. All right. So now, we could go back to ordinance number H9. These were, nine, 10, 11 were also part of the public hearing.
Your Honor, counsel, this is first reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash thirty-nine, and ordinance amending Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan, Land Use Goals, Policies, and MAP to create two new future land use MAP flume designations of Recreation Resort Mixed Use, RRMU, and Resort Residential Mixed Structure, RRMS, specifying implementing by right zoning districts as open space, OS, and residential, R one seven point five and R one ten, including limited planned development commercial, and optional zoning districts through use of a negotiated development agreement, Resort Community Commercial, RCC, and Resort Neighborhood Residential, R N R. Ask for approval of first reading. I do have one change I would like you to approve, but I need a second to find it. So, in section three, and I, in the council communication, I gave you several options. I want to simplify things and just tell you, this is the language I would recommend. And the reason why is, as I stated earlier, we cannot force inclusionary zoning on people. We have to clarify that it is, it is only through a negotiated development agreement that we get inclusionary zoning. So, would replace the language that refers to twenty percent with, to obtain, to obtain the flume designation of RRMS, a property owner must include in any statutory development agreement authorizing residential development of the subject property, a condition that a minimum of ten percent of the housing units shall be affordable to residents making no more than one hundred twenty-five percent of the median family income for Lincoln City. Again, that is the only change I would recommend at this time to ordinance two thousand nineteen dash thirty-nine. To a certain extent, so the motion will be approved first reading with changes as read, but to a certain extent, you have been disadvantaged by not seeing the implementing zoning districts, okay? So, just so you know, the implementing zoning districts say things like building height, this item is negotiable up to the limit in the city charter of forty-five feet. As to, you know, front yard setbacks, this item is negotiable up to the limit, you know, and they would specify something. So, you haven't seen that, so you might not understand the benefit of these designations. These designations do not impose those, or allow those restrictions. All they do is, this is the first step. This is the underlying land use designation which will be implemented with those zoning districts, and they will only be allowed through a negotiated development agreement. There is, however, a by right option under the ordinance where you can just develop with the existing R one seven point five or R one ten with the P U D allowance, at least in the RRMU, for a certain percentage. As you recall, in residential plan developments, you can do up to fifteen percent of the property as, as certain RC, limited RC uses that's in, it's in seventeen fifty-two, the P U D section. So, not trying to complicate it, but this will open up resort type uses once the zoning is implemented, if we come to an agreement in a statutory development agreement. You will not get those uses unless we agree in a, in a negotiated development agreement. What you will have is, by default, is the existing R one seven point five uses, plus whatever commercial allocation you might get in a planned development. So, using the villages as an example, although this is not the map amendment, this is, this would not change or be inconsistent with the existing villages approval. So.
Counselor?
Mr. Ravichello, did you say ten percent or twenty percent?
I said fifteen percent commercial allocation, but.
Affordable.
Right, not to exceed one hundred and twenty percent.
Oh, no, I said ten percent.
Do not recommend the twenty?
No. And that's because it's a minimum. Remember, negotiated development agreements are negotiated. So, you know, if you do all the negotiation for us ahead of time, there's nowhere for us to go. Plus, we don't want to burden all, all the property that's proposed to go to RRMS, which includes some of our property, with a twenty percent restriction, even if it's, can, it's really tightening your hands in negotiation. You may want other things. But it's certainly something we want in the city, and so it's, we're putting it out there that there's a certain need for affordable housing and workforce housing, and we expect that to be part of the negotiation. But I didn't want to, particularly the, legally, we can't impose twenty percent like the existing, the original language said.
How can we legally impose ten percent?
Because it says through a negotiated development agreement. Inclusionary zoning is allowed if it's negotiated. So wouldn't be voluntary if we didn't have that alternate by right option. But if you want the benefit of writing your own zoning district, or at least writing, modifying some of the standards, then we want something for that.
Well, if the number doesn't matter, then why not say twenty and negotiate it down? Why not have the standard be that?
Because it's a minimum of ten.
Why don't we say a maximum of twenty?
And.
A maximum of twenty?
Negotiate it, I mean, because if we're trying, I'm trying to just think of why, if we've been saying we want twenty percent of this to be low and affordable housing, how do we get that by saying it the right way, other than saying a minimum of ten percent?
Well, first, remember, the twenty percent came from the planning commission talking about the purchase of the villages, which was just the wrong premise. When we last negotiated a development agreement that was associated with an annexation, the developer agreed to ten percent of the properties meeting the affordability covenant standard. We think that's a doable number. And frankly, I, I didn't want to constrain not only private developers who, you know, may be among, depending on where we go with ordinance forty-one, not tonight, but because private owners may be one, among the ones that have this option, I don't want to constrain them, I also don't want to stick that burden on city property, anything above ten percent, which we think is a doable option.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things on this. One is that one of the priorities of the city council is to have affordable housing. Second is, is Mr. Ravichello's been explaining, we want to keep the flexibility that we have in, in these negotiations. If you were to say up to twenty instead of a minimum of ten percent, then you could get zero. You could negotiate away, all the way down to zero. If you feel that you, that affordable housing is a priority that you want to have with this, then I agree exactly with what Ms. Ravichello says, that you should have a minimum, which is ten percent. And that still gives you the flexibility to go higher if, if that is your desire.
I guess the, I'm looking for clarification, but it makes sense, because not all the land that is covered under this plan is owned by the city, and that, that's what we're concerned about. By going, so the question is, by going to a minimum of ten percent for the whole thing, the, the city, when negotiating with a developer, depending on what we negotiate, subsidy or whatever, can certainly, we know we're getting ten automatically, and the developer knows, but depending if we give up more, we can move up that list, so, the number. So it could be twenty-five or thirty, depending on what we're giving up.
Now, if you, if you were to imagine that if we're negotiating with someone who wants to buy a portion of city property, and we'd say, well, it says here that, that we'll provide incentives, so do more than the minimum ten percent, do twenty percent, and we'll give you a piece of property over here to do it on. And that's something that we can do in a negotiated development agreement, because we want to facilitate this, and we're not private developers. Now, I don't think a private developer would, would do that with their property, but given them a minimum ten percent, if they want the relief that comes with this implementing zoning district, which you haven't seen yet, you know, at least we'd get ten percent.
It also happens, Mr. Mayor, with private development as well. It may not be giving up property like, like Ms. Ravichello's talking about, but it is, comes in the form of things such as density bonuses, cluster housing, things like that that allows them to make a little bit extra and lessen their costs. So it, these things happen with private developers as well as public developers.
So I guess the, the question, and I, I may be missing it, so I apologize, but I don't understand the value added for whomever of these new designations. You know, you know, because I'm thinking out loud, you know, we as owners could and plan to always negotiate for this kind of affordable housing. We didn't need this designation, proposed designations. And I'm thinking back, the mixed use, heck, right now, you can use twenty-five percent of your residents for commercial. So I don't understand, when I've read that, and I can do that now. So I'm, I'm missing, for me anyway, a short list of saying, you know, this is an attractive designation, and, and I guess if I'm not mistaken, we can do development agreements anyway. So why, why? Why are we doing this?
Well, we can do.
I mean, it looks good, sounds good.
We can do development agreements, but development agreements need to have a finding that the development is consistent with your comprehensive plan and your zoning designation. So if your, if your zoning says your maximum building height is twenty feet, and your developer wants thirty-five, then you can't make that finding. But if the zoning code says, as is proposed here, but you just haven't seen them, that the maximum building height will be negotiable not to exceed the limit set by the city charter at forty-five feet, then you have been specifically authorized, and you can make a finding that that development is consistent with your code because that zoning district allows that flexibility. That, and, and with regard to the RRMU, it's designed to create attractions and things that are desirable, you know, winery, distillery, those kind of things that are associated with a resort, destination resort kind of uses. Those very attractive uses are in that RRMU. Now, I, I agree that to a certain extent, the RRMS zone, I can't quite wrap my head around what's the, the thing that makes it so attractive, except that you haven't seen the implementing zoning districts which say things like, the building height is negotiable in a development agreement, the setbacks are negotiable, the unit types are negotiable. And, and actually, that's the flexibility, is that you can have virtually every kind of residential use in that RRMS. Remember, we're trying to facilitate workforce and affordable housing, so we're trying to just open up residential uses. But you can't see that with just the flume, because it's at a higher level. What you don't have the benefit of is what staff has been doing with the proposed zoning districts.
Okay.
I just, I also don't want to say another Olivia Beach.
Again, the, the.
You know what I mean?
Nothing will happen unless you agree to it in a development agreement approved by this council. And development agreements are required to be approved by ordinance, and all, the only flexibility staff has is the flexibility you give us in those zoning districts.
I might point out that, you know, the, the, not just the zoning ordinances for the development, that apply to a development agreement, but also the zoning ordinances that will come back to you that will deal with the different land use zones that are proposed in the, in the land use map for this area. Just like we did with Rhodes End, we created a new zone when Rhodes End, after those four or five years, were brought into the town. Same thing will happen. Right now, this property is zoned as R one seven five, which means they can do whatever R one seven five allows. If they want to go beyond that, you're either going to negotiate things or you're going to create new zones. The next step, as Richard was talking about, is the creation of those zones, which will come back to you, and that's going to address density, that's going to address housing types, that's going to address what, what kind of houses can go in it, what kind of businesses. So, what we're experiencing here is a fairly normal pattern of adopting your comprehensive plan, then adopting your zoning ordinance. Richard used the term consistent, I use the term defensible. Your zoning ordinance is defensible when it matches up with what the comprehensive plan lays out. Remember, we have always operated where the comprehensive plan map and the zoning ordinance map are the same. This is now creating a comprehensive plan with a map, the zoning is going to be coming after that. And when you adopt that, when it goes to planning commission, when it comes to you, it should be consistent with what the zoning, or what the comprehensive plan map says it should be, and what the comprehensive plan itself says it should be.
And remember, ordinance thirty-nine that we've just done first reading on, and you haven't voted on yet, but thirty-nine is just creating the flume designations, it's not applying it anywhere. Forty and forty-one proposed to apply it. We're not going to do forty-one tonight because the findings aren't done. Forty is ready, but you can punt on that if you want to. I actually had recommended punting on it in the council communication, but if you wanted to do forty, I think it's ready to go. So, but thirty-nine is just creating the designations. And you're sorry you're disadvantaged in not having the implementing zoning districts, we just haven't put those out yet.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, right?
I don't think so.
Didn't I?
I asked for approval of first reading, and, but nobody did anything, so.
Okay.
Well. Oh, yeah, the change, the ten percent.
Yeah.
Look at that. You guys like that? Twenty minutes to be touring? I'll make a motion.
Prove first reading?
Yes, as read.
And is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Mark has a second. Case. It's been a while since we've been at nine o'clock, so you're a little slow tonight. Yeah? Roll call, please.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, counsel, this is second reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen dash thirty-nine, and ordinance amending the Lincoln City Comprehensive Plan, Land Use Goals, Policies, and MAP to create two new future land use MAP flume designations of Recreation Resort Mixed Use, RRMU, and Resort Residential Mixed Structure, RRMS, specifying implementing by right zoning districts as open space and residential R one seven point five and R ten, R one ten, including limited planned development commercial, and optional zoning districts through use of a negotiated development agreement, Resort Community Commercial, RCC, and Resort Neighborhood Residential, R N R. And I believe that I made a mistake, and I'm surprised Counselor Casper hasn't pointed this out. It should say limited planned unit development, because she caught that last time. So, ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance with the changes as read, including the adding the word unit in the title.
So moved.
So moved? We have.
Second.
And Counselor Casper? We've got a motion, uh, Hoagland? Got a motion, second reading to approve, and a second. Roll call.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Your Honor, counsel, you have two left. Forty, which applies the RRMU to twenty-two point nine acres, and you have forty-one, which is on the agenda.
I don't see them jumping up and down. I think we could just continue it.
Okay, has done. Don't want to miss something. Okay. Let's go, then. Thank you. That was a lot of ordinances. We have a resolution, resolution-
Did we vote on the continuation?
Oh, I'm sorry. We had a motion to continue, didn't we, or not?
There was a motion.
Okay, we need a motion to-
Not a motion, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Second, we didn't vote. It wasn't-
Let's do a roll call, then. Sorry. Jump ahead.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
And Hinton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you. All right, one resolution, resolution 2019-22, a resolution accepting the intent to form Bard Road Sewer Local Improvement District.
Your Honor, Counsel, this is basically the first step in a local improvement district. Staff has identified a need for improvements in this community and has prepared a report for you, and as per the council communication, would ask you to approve the report and approve the resolution, which is the initiation resolution. All that really does is set the public hearing process in motion. You have not committed to building it. You have the opportunity, basically, you call for a public hearing, you get the presentation at the public hearing, neighbors get to talk about it, and if you decide at that point that you wish to form, then I think we have 90 days after the public hearing to do the formation resolution, and everything goes from there.
So, I see, which typical the request, a failed septic. This area is also, we've heard many people talk about the road as well, and does that too complicate an LID that would encompass sewer as well as road, or?
We have done that in the past with the Voyage Lake, included both road improvements and sewer. I don't think we're trying to do that here.
No, I, well, I see that. I'm just asking if it's not an appropriate time. One might support another or vice versa?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. So, the reason that's not included is the cost to the residents of that area, because that would be included in their liens against our property for the LID, and that's why it was left off.
But we'll always face that, won't we? I mean, isn't that the restriction?
Yes, and that, you know, road is a gravel road, so.
Yeah. So, but I guess it's so, I'm wondering, this process is to test the climate for an LID regarding sewer?
Yes.
So, why would we not test? Because that's all I'm wondering, because we've heard people-
Yes, and some of the city property about, so, you know, some of that could come, which we did on the Lake Drive.
Right. We would be a partner in it, right.
And that's really the only reason we left it off, because our other LIDs are also, you know, pretty difficult for people to pay that full cost, so that's the reason we left it off. The whole, you know, that whole section of road is gravel.
If you would like to add that on, we could, we could come up with the costs associated with that, and I'm assuming, Richard, that we can scale it back at a later date if you so desire.
Well, remember, what we're doing here is approving the report, and then if they approve the report, approving a resolution, calling for a public hearing. If we want to tell staff, please do a report on streets and bring it forward as an option, we can do that. It just delays the sewer, or in this case, pressure sewer, which apparently is based on failed, as, you know, is an urgent need.
Yes, I, I'm, but I guess, what I thought I heard first was the overall cost of a lien, but then when you threw in the city-owned property, we would be a partner in that, so we would, so are we not interested because it's city property that would be adversely affected by a lien?
Well, it's a piece of our, it's a piece of our open space, so we wouldn't be developing it.
Right.
But it is still part of-
There would be a cost for us to bear as a budding property owner, but when, and so that factor is a budgeting factor. For one line, it brings up the adjoining property owners is not just us. It's the effect it'll have on the other ones as well.
Yeah. I want to make sure that it goes for the adjoining property owners that are more adversely affected than the city. I don't think we should be blocking, we, the city, should block something because we might get, have to pay our assessment.
No, I, no, when, when we, as Lila mentioned, it was, it was in consideration of the liens that would be on the properties. Whatever you guys decide to do on this, we'll pay our proportion of it. It's just a matter of getting it into the budget.
And I guess the other thing is we dig up the gravel road to lay our pipe even as small as it is, and-
And then not pave it. I want to pave it, but, of course.
I guess that's better than digging up a paved road, huh? That's also where I was kind of going with, but I know we'd have to build, we have to build a lot of road there and base and everything else, so.
Yes, that road has a fairly good base, but it's-
So, does anybody, you know, am I the only?
I had a thought.
I just raised the question.
You go ahead. I'll go after you.
I just, I knocked on all the doors on that street. It's not a high-end neighborhood.
Oh, I don't.
And, and, and this is a natural, this feels to me like a natural first step. The paving could come down, you know, when we're good and ready, but I, I, I think sewer line is obviously very important for a lot of reasons, health and all that. I think it would be an easier sell in that neighborhood to just do it one step at a time. I guess that's kind of, I think, not a good-
But the conditions the same as the 36th Street LID? The payment conditions and all?
They're similar. We'll probably be bringing that back to you in more of a report. The total project cost, we're looking at $212,000 for the installation of the line, and then for each property owner, we have the SDC of $4,048 for the ones with existing, you know, water. And then, that's just for the sewer, and then the onsite improvements that they will bear are $11,400.
Why are we charging them SDC charges?
Because we have to, yeah, it's a state law.
But are they, are the conditions the same as the 36th Street?
Meaning?
The last LID that we did, that we're having, have people having trouble paying us.
Right.
Are these conditions of payment, repayment, the same as them?
Yes, I think that's the way we left it, Richard.
Yeah, I think we would authorize installment payment of SDCs, just like we did on 36th. You know, the connection, yeah, I think it would all be exactly the same. And I think we'll continue to have, we'll continue to have issues with people making payments. And, you know, you can always take on some of the cost. You do not have to assess all the costs on the benefit of property owners.
I would like to know what's our total LID payment supposed to be a year or a month? Like, what are we supposed to be getting in as a city from these LIDs? What is that number?
Well, we give them a certain period of time to hook up, and so it really varies. I'd have to bring a report back to you.
But honestly, what is our yearly income from LIDs?
We can bring back information, both on the total amount that's supposed to be coming in and what is actually coming in, or what is delinquent as well. So, we can give you a breakdown of that.
Because we're acting knowingly, we, on these LIDs, we're acting as the bank on purpose to help facilitate the switchover, so.
And the sewer line on this street will help with development of lots, too.
Is it going to go up to our open space? Is it going to go from the paved at Bard all the way down?
Yes, it goes to the corner. If you're out there, you can see a hydrant, and that's about, it's right where it turns corner, the road.
And so, at this point, this is just to advance the next step in the report, public hearings, all that kind of stuff. Okay. Other questions, concerns? Make motion to approve resolution 2019-22?
So moved.
Is there a second?
All second.
We have a, a motion from Counselor Hoagland and a second from Mark. Counselor Mark, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
And Hoagland?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Might as well stay right there, huh?
Okay.
Our next one is the Nell Scott Force Main and Gravity Main Improvement Design. And for fiscal year 1920, City Council approved $250,000 for improvements to the Nell Scott Force Main and Gravity Main. And the city in the past, during major rain events, we experienced overflows at the Nell Scott Pump Station. In 2018, the city hired PACE engineers to conduct the hydraulic study of that downstream from the Nell Scott Pump Station. So, this is the line that goes down High School Drive in front of the schools and down, it'll go down to our new lines that we put under the creek. And that line has had issues. It's been in there for a really long time, and it's calcified, so our capacity in the pipe, we've tried, you know, many things to try and break that up, but it's, it's not going anywhere. So, the city received the Nell Scott Force Main and Syphon Hydraulic Analysis Report in June of 2019. This report identified the Nell Scott Force Main and Low Pressure Gravity Main from Highway 101 to Southeast 48th Place in need of upgrading. So, staff just completed that formal selection process to pick three consultants for seven different categories of projects under the Sanitary Collection System Design category. The following consultants were selected, and it was PACE Engineering, Keller Associates, and HBH Consulting Engineers. And on August 12th council meeting, council approved the engineering consultant selection, and so staff sent out a request for proposal to the three consultants listed and for the design of the Nell Scott Force Main and Gravity Main. So, staff received three proposals, selected PACE Engineering, and the project description that PACE Engineering will do if approved will provide the design, final construction drawings for the Nell Scott Force Main and Gravity Main, also included in this geotechnical investigation in the unstable road near the elementary school and the preparation of a block grant application for construction and funding of the project. And so, the City Council approved the fiscal year 1920 budget of $250,000 for the project, and the following table that you see, their, their bid for that was $249,000. Estimated construction cost for this project is $2348,000. So, our, our staff recommendation for the design contract to be awarded to PACE Engineering in the amount of $249,000.
Questions? You weren't kidding when you told us earlier it was a big project.
No, it's probably, you know, I hope it stays at that amount.
But, again, that has been a known bottleneck for a long time, and we've tried to work around it.
Yes, we have. And the Force Main line, so it's a Force Main all the way to the elementary school from the Nell Scott Pump Station. It's a 15-inch line that's been in the ground for a long time, and so we would probably increase the size of that line. And then we also have the Spyglass Pump Station coming into that with a pump line as well, so there would be air relief valves away from anybody, but just different mechanisms to make sure the pipe's working correctly.
With, with construction awards, you know, you give us, you know, and we see, you know, the different amounts that they give. Sometimes you give us graphs of, you know, what they bid out. I don't see this here for this type of thing. You're just saying we, we, staff selects this, and we want you to approve it.
And that's because you approved this process for selection.
Of the three, and then you picked the one?
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell us why?
They're the most qualified. They did the, they did the report, which the others used to, you know, help do their proposal.
But they made the report that the other two companies used to bid against?
Correct.
So, they made a nice book for you?
It was a good report. Yeah. So, that's, that's the process. You're going to see this, you know, come up?
This pick three?
Right.
Do the last. Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
May I make a motion to recommend the design contract be awarded to PACE Engineering in the amount of $249,000?
Second.
We have a motion to approve $249,000 for PACE Engineering, and a second from Counselor Hinton. Any further discussion, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just curious, what would the timetable be for the entire project?
I'm sure it will have to be phased, and so they'll have a few months to finish, finish their report. So, we probably won't go into anything until next fiscal year. So, it'll take them a while to do this design.
And then, were you not looking for matching grants or some grants as well?
Yes, that's what, that's what part of this is.
Yeah.
Is-
So, that may take a little longer before we get the funding.
Yeah, they're going to do the block grant application for us at preparation.
Okay. But next fiscal year for sure, for most likely. Roll call, please.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. All right, now we have a sidewalk.
Yes, we do. It's one of our, our pet projects. Been working on, trying to get funding for this project for a really long time. So, it is the Highway 101 sidewalk on the east side of the highway from Southeast 19th Street to Southeast 23rd, and it will fill in a section that Mr. Gibson, who used to ride that section in his wheelchair, said that it would allow him to get all the way from the Theater, 17th Street in Ocean Lake, all the way to Theater West in his wheelchair. And this was really a missing link, ADA, missing link. And, and it's just an unsafe section with a ditch and very small area to walk. So, City Council approved $480,000 for a design and construction of this highway project, and the Highway 101 Southeast 19th, 23rd project consists of a six-foot bike lane, a six-foot sidewalk on the east side of 7,761 square feet, 1,100-
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. All right, now we have a sidewalk.
Yes, we do. It's one of our, our pet projects. Been working on trying to get funding for this project for a really long time. So it is the Highway 101 sidewalk on the east side of the highway from Southeast 19th Street to Southeast 23rd. And it will fill in a section that Mr. Gibson, who used to ride that section in his wheelchair, said that it would allow him to get all the way from the Theater, 17th Street in Ocean Lake, all the way to Theater West in his wheelchair. And this was really a missing link, ADA, missing link. And, and it's just an unsafe section with a ditch and very small area to walk. So City Council approved $480,000 for a design and construction of this highway project. And the Highway 101 Southeast 19th, 23rd project consists of a six-foot bike lane, a six-foot sidewalk on the east side of 7,761 square feet, 1,190 feet of curb, two water quality facilities, like we put in the Nell Scott area. So they're called Filtrars. And so they filter the water off the highway, and that's an ODOT requirement that we handle all of that water that used to go into the swell or the ditch. And 463 feet of 18-inch storm pipe and 195 tons of asphalt. And so that 18-inch storm pipe will connect into the storm system that was built in the Nell Scott project. And so we filter it before it gets there, before it goes to Valde Creek. And so Public Works completed the design of the sidewalk project. The project was advertised for bid September 11th, 2019. The City Public Works Department opened bids on the project on October 3rd, 2019, and we received eight bids. And R&amp;R General Contractors was the low bidder at $500,999, and that includes night work. And K&amp;E Escavation was second at 542,183.50. And even with their night work, they're, they're still a higher bidder than that first bidder. And Jackson Industries LLC at 582,779. D&amp;D Concrete and Utilities at 602,439. Emery &amp; Sons Construction Group LLC, 618,167. Enterprise Northwest at 649,472. Lawson Corp. at 669,899. And RK Concrete Construction at 675,396. So our lowest responsive and responsible bidder was R&amp;R General Contractors, Inc., in the amount of the 590, 900, $500,999 for night work only, and 465.99 for ability to work during the day. So that was a difference of $35,000. And so, let's see, that's a little redundant, I won't read that again. So we have a table that shows what, what the project has cost so far. We've done, we've had some CAD support and storm design work. Otherwise, we've done everything in-house and had many meetings with ODOT and property owners. So consideration for night work versus daytime work, which is what we were asking council, what your preference is going to be on that, is ODOT permit requires no lane reduction between 6:00 AM and 7:00 PM Monday through Thursday for the project duration. During the summertime, nighttime traffic is approximately 30% of the total traffic. And during winter nighttime, it's 27% of the total traffic. And so the average daily traffic counts are 20 for six, 20, I can't even say it, 26% lower than the average daily summer counts. So we have some residential properties that are within 300 feet of the project site near Southeast 19th, but for the most part, the nighttime noise will probably not have an impact on residential properties. And so it becomes a decision, which we did talk to the contractor, it sounded like the night work would stretch, stretch the project out a little bit because they have to do smaller batches and trying to get, you know, contractors to run their plants and supply things. But the, a couple other things I want to point out. So, let's see, I want to give you the definition of night work only. So the definition for night work only is that the contractor shall work only between 6:00 PM at night and 10:00 AM in the morning. And there is a potential that there will, well, let's see. Oh, our potential was whether or not it would change the bids, you know, because if one of them bid the projects less, but the night work more, then you'd have a different decision to try and make here, but that's not the case, so. So, and ODOT's traffic lane closure, June 1st to October, October 1st is no lane restriction, including reduction of travel lanes between hours of 6:00 AM and 7:00 PM Monday through Thursday. You can have no weekend lane closures, including Fridays, and state-recognized holidays. So they wouldn't be working between Friday through, through Sunday. So it'll be just a, during the week, project like, like a lot of the rest of them. October 1st to June 1st, no lane restrictions, including reduction of travel lanes between hours of 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM. So that's our rush hour areas. And Monday, Thursday, and then no weekend lane closures, including Fridays or state holidays. So they have quite a few restrictions. We've definitely completed night, night work before, so it makes a difference of $20,999 increase in that, this bid total. I have all of those kind of spelled out so you can decide which, which way you want to go with this.
Question, oh, Ron?
Just to add a little bit to that, the staff report gives you a recommendation of one or the other. It didn't, we didn't really commit ourselves, but there is one factor that I wanted to just bring up, and that's the experience that we had this year with ODOT's work on the bridges. And all of that was done at night work. And that went very smoothly, and we received a number of compliments because it did not affect the daytime traffic. To me, that kind of tips the scales in the extra amount of money Debbie and I will bring back in a budget amendment to you if that's what you decide. But the experience that we had this, this year with the bridges on just nighttime work was just a very good experience for our community.
Councilor?
Just going to make a motion if we're ready.
Oh, you go ahead and make a motion, then we can.
Okay. I move to award the construction contract to R&amp;R General Contractors, Inc., in the amount of $500,999, with the construction contingency of $25,000, which is 5% of the bid amount, for a total of $5,200, $525,999, with the provision that the contractor only work night hours.
Second. We have a motion with a second from Councilor Parsons. Questions, just deliberation, Councilor Mark?
So I'm, this is sidewalk work, so I, I, it's, might close one lane when they're, they're working. And I, let me just, there's a bunch of businesses from the hilltop down past Bear Valley, and then there's some open areas. So I'm just wondering what the impact of daytime work is going to be on, and I, I understand Bear Valley's concern, I'm sympathetic to it, but it, I'm, I'm guessing that they're going to do this work without closing, you know, any, any, closing the access to each individual business. I would think they would do that.
They would.
Is as expeditiously as possible. So I'm morally wondering how much advantage there is to those businesses to having it done during night? How much of a disadvantage is it to do that work during the day to those individual businesses? Is there any way to kind of express that?
Well, anytime you affect someone's driveway, you know, they would still allow customers in, but whenever you have construction going on, it, it deters business. You know, we, we heard that through the Nell Scott project as well, so it's, it's difficult for businesses. And, you know, the night works, they'll, they will be closing a lane at night on, on the highway, and they wouldn't be doing that during the daytime. But I don't know that that's really a factor. You know, it's better to have that area for them to work, probably, so. Yeah, it's just, there's pros and cons to both, both ways. But during the daytime, you're definitely going to affect people's dri, and it's, it's really, even though you have them open, you know, and we, we put up signs for, or we have the contractors put up signs, driveways open, you know, and only try and work on one half of it at a time. But it's still, it's still deters people because you have a construction going on. You have BME Packaging in there, you have the Habitat for Humanity.
Store, yeah.
Store, you know. So there, there are quite a few businesses, and they, they'll probably do their staging area more down toward 23rd Street.
Did you mention when this construction would take place?
They have a window, they have until April 1st to complete it. And I would imagine they'll probably want to get started on it right away.
And, and I'm sorry, is, is, is the nighttime, would the nighttime work take significantly longer than doing it during the day?
They did say it would take longer. It just stretches it out because it is smaller batches of, of concrete and trying to get people to cooperate. But we did that window of 6:00 PM to 10:00 AM, so they can still, you know, be working, you know, first thing in the morning. So it gives some leeway.
I just had a question about the 5% contingency. Is it because it's the type of work, or why is it only 5%?
You know, the, the plans are really, really tight, so I.
So it's just the type of work and how it's, okay?
Yeah, and we're just trying to keep the, keep the cost in, in order.
I'm not complaining, I'm just.
Councilor Hoagland?
I would love to see what that cost savings is, you know, it just says in-house only. I mean, it would be cool to see what that, what you estimate that benefit would be, just as a way to like, say, hey, it was cool, you know?
Yeah, they did, um.
Cost savings where?
It says in-house only. It doesn't get, it doesn't give the amount of money.
It's, it's in-house, and I, I mentioned the surveying and CAD support we have to farm out. But the in-house design is by our, our staff.
It would just be cool to know that amount.
Yeah, I'd be happy to put that in.
And then, when or where are we going to put a crosswalk to get to that west side of the road?
Yeah, that's, that's a future look.
Okay.
Yeah, the, well, actually, the dis, that's always been the discussion. Because if I recall, the Nell Scott Gap also had a crosswalk, not crosswalk, a sidewalk and bike lane on the east side. And we pulled that to make budget on the Nell Scott, so.
Yes.
Not fun taking your kid down for that walk?
Oh, hey, I'm, I hear you. So when we, but we didn't have a choice because we were five million short. So what, what that did was pull up, then how do you get people across from the west side to the east side and vice versa? So that continues, and that's real bad, Eric, as pointed out earlier with the merging.
As 23rd Street develops more, depending on what goes in in that corner, there, there could be a signal there even.
I guess the, the question I had for you was, this sidewalk has been around, if I remember, I, we looked at this and delayed construction earlier this year, where it was planned to be in May, to, you know, had purposely delayed in consideration of the businesses. So I guess I'm regurgitating some of the stuff that we, we, Councilor, have set a high priority to close the gap on 101. This is certainly a gap. No time is a good time for construction that affects businesses. However, winter is certainly better than summer. And we've taken the other approach of, I think, the suggestions, seeing what it does cost to do night work. And that's, I think that's helped us, and we've had a couple of, of projects. We know it'll be disruptive, and I guess some of the earlier comments by Mr. Torrance was that the talk with the community, the neighboring, now that we've got to this point, do, does R&amp;R sit down, or can we have R&amp;R sit down with the businesses and lay out what's going to happen?
Certainly. We, we do a pre-construction.
I thought, I thought you did before.
We do. We don't do a, a pre-bid. We did not do a pre-bid on this one, but we, we will do a pre-construction with the contractor that's awarded.
Once we know who the contractor is, yeah.
Yes, and I, I've looked them up, and they are well-qualified. They do rail work in Portland.
Where are they from?
They're out of Wilsonville.
Oh, okay.
So you can look them up on the website, on their website, it's, they look very reputable.
Any questions from this side of the, let's see. All right, we have a motion to approve with a second. No more deliberation. Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, this is October to April, okay. City manager?
I just have one item, Mr. Mayor. So we had the first of three work meetings, and, and a total of those three work meetings was nine separate topics. We did not, it really get a good feel and a good understanding of where we want to, where you would like to go with the sign and design ordinances. So it's been recommended to me that we use the meeting on the 29th to try to finish that discussion on the sign and design ordinances, and then move the others to a later date. You have your meeting after that, November 4th, so we would need to schedule another work meeting. But as staff, as we have discussed that meeting, it would be helpful for us to have a continuation of that meeting to get a little bit further feel as to where you guys would like to end up before we put a ton more of staff time into, into this. We would also invite the Planning Commission to join that meeting as well. So if, if you are okay with it, we'd like to use the 29th to continue the discussion on the sign and design ordinances. And then on the 4th, we would deal with long-range water, food trucks, and our waste stream or trash. And then we would schedule a future meeting for the excise tasks, the gas tax, and the fireworks discussions.
Can you answer my question? I just didn't want him to lose track of the design part, because that was like.
Nope, we, we're just keeping track, and we're adding to the list.
Yep. So thoughts from Councilor, does that make sense? I, I would agree. I think we covered a lot of territory in that work session, and we hate to drop the momentum on those two issues. So consensus, nobody disagrees for both, both works, that remaining work sessions?
Wonderful, that's all I have then.
You can email that.
Yes.
Councilor?
Just one thing, petitioner in the Luba appeal having to do with the, the bluff. Requested additional time, is actually technically the legal counsel requested additional time to file the petition. I didn't think that was possible, but when I went over the rules, it says that with the agreement of all the parties, there can be an extension of time. The intervenor, the owner of the property, agreed, so I went ahead and consented as well. So I just wanted you to get this to know that. We won't see the petition until the end of the month. It was, would have been due this week. So I, again, will discuss whether or not we even want to respond after we see the petition. We'll have 21 days after it comes in. I think it's October 30th, I think is the deadline. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. You know, I noticed, before I go to, under, back to pub comments from citizens present, Kathy, steer, you put in the, some remarks from a citizen. Was that just a placeholder, or I slipped over that?
No, it was, we knew that, we knew that that individual wanted to come and had some information to present, but she called today and said, can we, can we postpone that? And as it turns out, actually, the, that you recently have made some changes to the ordinance, where the decision now needs to be made by me, and then you become the appeal authority. And I had that discussion with her today, and so we're, we're going forward.
Okay, great, thank you. With that, then, we can go to any kind of acti, action needed from the executive session or work sessions?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hinton, please.
Actually, there are two motions. I'll make them separate. Actually, there are two motions. I'll make them separately, because they're two different items from our executive session. One is, I move to direct staff to offer a compromise as discussed in the contract dispute item.
From the executive session?
From the executive session.
Second. So we have a motion from Councilor Hinton, second from Councilor Parsons, to direct staff to, um-
Do you want to hear the rest?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Direct, direct staff to offer the compromise, or a compromise as discussed in our contract dispute.
And that was on the contract dispute question. All right.
I'd like to recuse myself, as I was not present.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
I'm sorry.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
And Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Mr. Mayor, I have a second motion?
Yes.
Which is, I move to direct staff to consult with commercial development partner for the North Lincoln parcel.
And go with option two? Is that the-
Just to consult.
Captain Marvel.
Oh, that's right, okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to recuse myself from this vote as well, same reason.
Thank you. So we have a motion, and is there a second? Second from Councilor Mark? And this was from the executive session. Yeah, okay, got it now.
Do you mean the motion?
Hinton, second by Mark.
Yes.
Hoagland, Epstein, Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And one more, maybe?
Oh, we didn't, I thought the other two we don't-
You have, you had one other item discussed in executive session about, it was also property acquisition, and-
It had some options.
It had some options listed.
We had said that the, the attorney and the manager had authority to negotiate.
To get it to that point, okay.
As I recall.
They only had two.
No, they don't on that one. I think it was one of the other ones.
I only wrote down those two that-
Oh.
-Councilor Hinton cited.
Do you?
So-
I don't know that it would be- Mr. Mayor, if I recall, there was, Rich and I had both had talked to you about that. I had mentioned that I felt we had the authority to do that. Richard said it would be best if you had a motion to that effect.
Oh, okay, so.
Okay.
All right, well, we're, so as long as you can get it to where we can take a look at something.
Well, I, I-
You want a motion tonight?
I, I, well, I think what I, what was, again, I, I felt that we had the authority to do that. If you want to just be secure on that, and staff to be secure on that, just a, a motion to proceed with the negotiations on the third piece of property.
Considering option two.
Yeah.
So moved.
Motion by-
Second. Second by Parsons.
Proceed with negotiations, option two?
Option two, correct.
That's discussed in the executive session.
Yeah. Long night, lot of stuff. Roll call?
How about abstain?
You were abstaining.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Casper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. This will be the time for public comments. Come forward. Yeah, right.
My name's Scott, I'm from Bear Valley Nursery. You folks met me earlier. I think, did you pass that for night work? I was like nodding out back there, and it sounded like you did, and I thank you for that. I apologize for sitting back there looking like a turd. I wasn't trying to intimidate or anything, but I had to fix the record. I got out of bounds when I stepped in and talked about the Sulet's mortgage, and presenting that and to the planning department. I, I stated that I told the planning department that it was going for sale for $5.49 on the auction block. It was actually $4.59, so I was incorrect. So I punished myself and sat back there to correct the record. I don't know if I should call you Mr. Mersey anymore, or Mr. Liberal, but I did learn a lot tonight, and I was ready to get my wallet out and do some negotiating with you folks, because it sounds like Lincoln City negotiates now, and all the above. But I do, would just like to throw this out, just take one se, minute. The, the taxable assess, taxation that you folks receive on properties within, for Lincoln City is like $1 billion, $788 million. I had to get this number from the county, because the city accountant wanted to give it to me. It cost me 15 bucks. The county helped me do these numbers. You know, if you were to do a three cent levy on that amount, you would revenue like $53,000 a year that could go toward night work projects. Three cents on a $250,000 home is $18 a year. It's very cheap. And I've talked to a lot of people, and if they knew that the money was being used right, they would have no problems with that. And I still think that any big projects in the city on Highway 101 should be done at night. It's not just the businesses, the traffic, as soon as you come to the first signs, the traffic slows, and it slows way back. And it's just a bad feeling for people that try to come through town. And I thank you for doing the right thing, and everything that is said in this room stays in this room, is what I feel with it.
That's the problem.
So, so Scott, you know, as much as I appreciate your, you know, coming forward, and, you know, you know, apologizing, but at the same time, going up and beyond the call of duty of taxing your fellow citizens, I, I want you to join Bill Lat, Lacher? Lacher?
Lackner.
Lackner. He was a gentleman earlier that suggested annexation of different stuff, and so I'm, I'm gonna, again, have people call you when-
That's fine.
Just so you know.
Three cent tax, that's fine.
You're the three cent tax guy.
So just to make it fair, I've been up since six o'clock yesterday morning, taking care of a 91-year-old customer that got checked out of the hospital, has no family. She fell, she fell, and she's back in the hospital today, but, you know, I tried, and she's in a lot better hands than me dropping her 20 times. So I'm kind of tired. So maybe I didn't mean that about the tax.
Waffling, I hear, waffling. Thank you.
Bye.
All right.
Goodnight, Scott.
Comments? Judy?
I have none.
Judy, comments?
I have none.
Parsons?
I would rain.
Really? Because of the time?
Exactly, yep.
Mr. Hoagland?
That way.
Nothing?
Hey, sir.
Mr. Mark?
Please, step forward. This, this is along the theme of what's, what's said in here stays in here.
Oh, yeah.
We, 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 we had a, did something with accessory dwelling units, and I, I just wanted to sort of mention the experience I had, and, you know, I've mentioned this to you, Mr. Chandler. But I had a property, a property owner in town complained to me some months ago that he would like to put accessory dwelling unit on some of his rental property, make a little more money, and there's a demand for it, and he can't do that. And I checked, and I found out actually he can do it. And I went back and let him know. This is a fellow who's fairly knowledgeable in town, and owns property, and has lived here many, many decades. And so I'm going to, how do we get the word out? And I remember, hey, Lincoln City!
Hey!
And maybe there-
Check that.
Maybe there is, maybe we could pursue a tool to-
You're done with the comments, but-
I'm coming, I got something.
Councilor Mark, you're, you're okay.
It's okay, that's, that's it.
It's called Ron's Report.
Ron's Report.
No, I, he said there was, there was, there's software for that kind of stuff, yeah.
Yeah. We'll put it on a future work session.
I do have some, one thing. I do, I forgot.
Now you're just gonna have to wait.
Well, that's fine, I'll wait after-
Councilor Hinton, please.
Okay, okay, you made me do it. Okay. I just, I just have a question for the city manager. Any updates on Logan Road transfer to the city?
A meeting with the county manager Thursday, and so nothing to update until after I meet with him.
Okay. Thanks.
That's it?
That's it.
I'd just like to thank the Lincoln City Police Department for tasing me on Saturday. When, you know-
You just got out of control again.
I ate my words of voting no. It only took three years, so. It's been, halfway through the process, the police academy is wonderful, and what a job you guys do. So again, thank you. And-
You're here.
I mean, absolutely incredible what, what, mentally and physically what you have to go through. And tasing was crazy, but I might do it again. No, I don't.
Is it therapeutic?
It was, it was very interesting. It felt like getting hit by a, kicked by a horse.
Okay, well, then let me continue with-
Coffee with the mayor?
No, no, this is, since you brought up police, I want to share with all of you that you probably have heard of the Police K9 Project, where the police department's trying to raise $75,000. The last report I had is they're $20,000 short, 20,000. Recently, an individual has stepped forward and said they would pledge $10,000 if the citizens of Lincoln City contributed that, the $10,000 difference, that they would, they, the individual group, would put the $10. So I think there'll be press all over the place this week, but I wanted you to know that we could close this, $10,000 has to be raised by year end. So we've got two months, in essence, two and a half months to raise $10,000, and that would close the gap of the $20,000. So if you really think they're doing the right thing, and actually, a lot of kudos for all the citizens that have put forth so far, because that's been a big, big lift. But this should put it over, and well within less than 12 months, so it's a, a good, good mark. So that's ready to go, so I wanted you guys to know it second. The other thing is, at the League of Cities, evidently, some of our councilors picked up an award, Silver Safety Award to the city of Lincoln City, injury frequency rate of 1.1 in fiscal year 1819. So does that mean one person got hurt, or for every one person we have working?
They have a complicated-
Sergeant in a walking boot?
Yeah. Was it the police department? But thank you. You were there, Hoagland and Parsons were there, and Diane, yeah. So thank you for, for going. The other things I have, Mr. Chandler, could you confirm, or could we confirm that we only have one meeting in November and December? Wouldn't that be a good idea to-
That is correct.
So-
One in November, one in December.
One in November and one in December.
Well, regularly scheduled meetings. You do have a work meeting.
Yeah, we have, we'll load it up with work meetings, but the council meetings will be-
Just for fun.
All right, and let's see. I have, with public works here, I have a, an open house quasi at Enrique's, the 16th, Wednesday, on sidewalks, north sidewalks, northeast, 14th. Okay, so from 4:00 to 6:00 regarding sidewalks. So we, never ending, and yes, coffee with the mayor, and yes, 10:29 work session, and we talked about that.
Do they have the time on that work session?
Uh, 9:00.
That was one you scheduled in the morning.
At 9:00 AM to-
Oh, yeah, 1:00 PM, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Anything last shot? Boy, 9:46. Call it a night.
Oh, doggy.
Yeah, I was enthusiastic.
Smash your fingers or what?
Thank you. Thanks for hanging around.